That's why we don't ask Caleb.
I'd like to call the Malmell City Council meeting to order the first order of business is the invocation and pledge of allegiance, and I've asked Councilmember Vapurzand to lead us in that tonight.
Let's pray. Father, we love you. Thank you for the opportunity to gather here this evening. Thank you for your blessings innumerable to us. Thank you for the wonderful city that we live in and the nation that we are, one nation under God. I pray that our hearts would be united this evening. The problem with unity, as we pray for it, as I pray for unity, it may look differently to me than it does to someone else, so we choose to pray for your will. And we ask that you give us wisdom and discernment this evening in all the decisions that are made, and I pray that you'd be honored and pleased by what we do here and what we say. Of course, in Jesus' name we ask it. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice over all.
The only item under special guests and announcement is the 2018 State of the City Address, and I'm going to be doing that tonight. I apologize to everybody in advance. It's about eighteen pages long, but I'm not going to read every word of every page. So I'm going to hit the highlights. What we've done is always ask my department heads to provide departmental summaries, and so I'll go through those departmental summaries, and then at the very end, I'm doing a little different. I'm going to read the letter from me then, after we go through the departmental summaries. So if you'd go to page two to start with. City Attorney's Office. In 2017, the city attorney balanced his time between City Hall and the Police Department, spending approximately three days a week at City Hall and two days a week at the Police Department and District Court. Additionally, the city attorney was on-call twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, to provide assistance to law enforcement officers and other city personnel. The city attorney prosecuted all misdemeanors, traffic violations, inordinance violations in Malmell District Court, which resulted in 2,671 dispositions. He also handled truancy matters for Pine Forest Elementary, Malmell Middle School, and Malmell High School. The city attorney litigated or saw litigation in civil matters involving the city. No new civil litigation cases were filed against the city of Malmell in 2017. Two cases remain in active litigation, Stephen A. Mosley and Cheryl M. Mosley versus City of Malmell et al., case sixty-CV-16-6845/4:17-CV-0500-KGB, which concerns the city's attempts to enforce its fence ordinances, was removed from state court to federal court. Martin Wainwright versus the City of Malmell et al., sixty-CV-163084 involves allegations that Mr. Wainwright received injuries while being transported by officers to the Police Department. The city attorney's goal has always been to defend or pursue the interests of the city as determined by the mayor and the city council, in such a way as to limit any financial exposure for the city of Malmell and to achieve the goals of the city at large while protecting the rights of the citizenry. City Clerk Treasurer's Office. On October the third, 2016, Tina Timmons was appointed to the position of City Clerk Treasurer. At that time, she was appointed, the city had been without a City Clerk Treasurer for one month and a Finance Director and Human Resources Director for several months. Ms. Timmons, as City Clerk Treasurer, took over most of the tasks of the Finance Director, which included supervising staff, paying taxes associated with payrolls and pensions, and audit preparation. During this entire transition period, Ms. Timmons processed the payroll, citywide purchasing, bid letting, and maintaining permanent records, which included contracts. In July 2017, a new Finance Director was hired, and she assumed the duties associated with that position. The Finance Director and the City Clerk worked hard through 2017 to make sure that the City Clerk's office and the Finance Department coordinated their efforts and worked together as a team. In addition, best practices were sought and implemented in both departments. As part of that effort, staff has been cross-trained. Code Enforcement Permits Department. In 2017, single-family residential housing continued to grow with sixty new permits issued versus fifty-three in the previous year. Ridgeview Trails, Osage Hills, Chalets at Country Club, and Malmell Valley are the most active subdivisions for new construction. There were ten commercial remodel permits issued in 2017, including large projects at Malmell Library, Kimberly-Clark, and Molex. The Center on the Lake, Malmell Charter High Schools, Sonic, and Chick-fil-A finished construction in 2017 and are open to the public. The Permits Office was busy in 2017. They issued 2,067 permits, which was a 20% increase over the previous year. Code enforcement violations are a daily challenge. Code enforcement officers issued 1,254 requests for compliance tags and forty-two citations to appear in District Court and thirty stormwater notices of violation. Community and Economic Development. Business retention and expansion is one of the primary goals of the Department of Community and Economic Development. This includes building strong relationships between the city of Malmell and existing industries and businesses, assisting in problem-solving, and looking for opportunities to help businesses grow. More than half of all new job creation comes from the existing industries and businesses. Part of the BRNE efforts include quarterly luncheons with the industrial leaders. In 2017, the city hosted four quarterly meetings with the industries. There were several noteworthy events in 2017 in the Malmell Industrial Park. Marcy Miller replaced Kirkland as the Kimberly-Clark Plant Manager. Marcy has a short commute time as she and her family chose to live in Malmell. Several industries invested in their existing facilities with upgrades and renovations and expansions, including Kimberly-Clark, Molex, and Dillard's Internet Fulfillment Center. Dave Kaufman retired from Kimberly-Clark in June of 2017. Dave helped locate Kimberly-Clark in Malmell more than twenty-five years ago. The city submitted several sites in Malmell for projects with Metro Little Rock Alliance and Arkansas Economic Development Commission. Some of those projects are still pending. Other CED activities in 2017 included the city of Malmell participated in the planning for the International Conference of Shopping Centers Arkansas event. In February of 2017, the department director serves as co-chair of the P-Three Committee, which stands for Public-P private partnership. Steve Jones and Kevin Sexton with AEDC provided a drive-around Malmell report, which highlighted the positive aspects of the city as well as areas that could use some improvement. The city continued its efforts to attract retail businesses to Malmell as well as corporate offices. The city accepted proposals from several website providers and selected Civic Plus to design the city's new website. The new website launched in December 2017. Notify Me is one of the features on the new website. Sign up to receive notifications from the city of Malmell about the things that matter to you, newsletter, job opening, calendar events, etc. This is separate from what you can sign up for, which is code red and smart nine-one-one. The city continued to work closely with the Malmell Area Chamber of Commerce to support local business, attract new businesses, promote entrepreneurship, and to support the local schools and help students connect with industries and businesses. Courts. In 2017, the Malmell District Court entered dispositions on 2,671 criminal traffic and ordinance violations, very nearly the same as in the previous year, and all the court collected $187,069.75 in fines and $19,587 in probation fees, down $29,453.25 from 2016. The court had forty-two civil and small claims cases in 2017, with most civil cases still filed in an attempt to collect on a debt and a small upswing in small claims cases. Finance Department. The city hired Shannon Vega, CPA, as the new Finance Director in July 2017. At this time, the Finance Department is fully staffed. We are working on streamlining tasks to run the department effectively and efficiently. Every position in the Accounting Department is continuing to create the desk procedure for their position and cross-train within the department. The desk procedures and cross-training are essential to running the department when staff are out of the office. The desk procedures will allow anyone to perform tasks by using the desk procedures for that task. We're improving the purchase-order process by streamlining processes and increasing internal canderos. In 2017, we improved the accounts payable process by eliminating steps without sacrificing internal controls. We will continue to evaluate processes in the Accounting Department for more efficiencies and risk reduction. Fire Department. The Malmell Fire Department continues to work hard to provide the best possible service to the community. In doing so, we pride ourselves in providing not only EMS and suppression services, but also top-notch fire protection, code enforcement, and fire education to our citizens. Fire Department Elementary Education was once again conducted through the Fire Department's Survival Kids Program at Pine Forest Elementary and Malmell Charter Elementary School, where fourth graders are taught not only fire safety, but bicycle safety, stranger awareness, and home safety, as well as other safety-related subjects. For the year 2017, Malmell Fire Department personnel conducted 218 business inspections within the city of Malmell, resulting in the correcting of eighty-eight code violations. The total number of responses for 2017 was 1,687. The Malmell Fire Department received a FEMA AFG grant, Assistance of Firefighters grant, for $11,905 from the federal government in 2017 for the purchase of fit testing equipment for fire department personnel. The equipment will be placed in service during the month of February and will ensure that our firefighters' masks are the correct fit for each individual and will ensure that they will be safer wearing a self-contained breathing apparatus when entering hazardous atmospheres. The new Pierce engine for Station One is due for delivery to the city of Malmell Fire Department within the next couple of months. It's actually been delivered to Conway, and we should be receiving it within the next month to get some more attachments put on it. Human Resources. In July 2017, the city hired a new Director of Human Resources Department, Jared Azon. Jared took on the role vacated by the retirement of the previous Director, Vernon James. The new Director joined HR Specialist Rue Hilton to bring the HR Department back to full strength and to provide continued support and service to each city employees. In 2017, Human Resources was able to maintain all employee benefits plans without any major adjustments. Employee benefits, such as health, dental, vision, long-term disability, life, and AD&amp;D, saw no increase in premiums for the 2017 benefit year. The Ninth Annual Employee Appreciation Day was combined in 2017 with the Annual Employee Health Benefits Fair. During the Employee Health Benefits Fair, we were grateful to have fourteen exhibitors who offered a wide range of services for our employees to explore. There was a free breakfast provided by American Fidelity and served by volunteers from counting on each other. During the Employee Appreciation Luncheon, the city of Malmell recognized twenty full-time employees for their years of service. Thanks goes to Bank of the Ozarks for providing the food for this event. The HR Department is charged with providing staff support for the Malmell Civil Service Commission. One of the main responsibilities in this support role is to prepare and administer the commission's entry level and promotional exams. Parks and Recreation. In 2017, the Parks and Recreation Department was eighty-five percent staff for the majority of the year, due in part to transitioning positions as well as military obligations. In August, the department underwent a significant transition as longtime Office Administrator Arlie Bowen moved with her family to Colorado, and then Administrative Assistant Allison Jones was promoted to the position of Office Administrator after careful consideration of a number of the applicants. Each year, the Parks and Recreation Department strives to better the multitudes of facilities it manages, as well as the services offered to the citizens of Malmell, while also finding ways in which the department can contribute to the overall sense of community for the citizens we serve. In 2017, we continued to present Movies in the Gym, a fishing derby at Lake Valencia, Malmell Annual Fourth Fest at Lake Willistee, and the most successful haunted house and carnival to date. Ticket sales and proceeds from the two-night event totaled $4,617.50. It was applied toward travel expenses associated with the youth council's annual attendance at the National Legal Cities Congressional City Conference in March 2018. In December 2017, the department was happy to assist the Malmell Youth Council with improvements at the Pat Dodson Dog Park, which included the addition and installation of play structures for the dogs, as well as planting several trees to provide shade for pet and their owners. The Parks and Recreation Department other facilities benefited from updates and improvements in 2017 as well, including a new metal building which was added for additional equipment storage at the Diamond Center. At the girls' softball complex, they added a new field for six-year-olds and under players and made significant improvements to the drainage system. They cleared the area surrounding the complex of underbrush and added additional fence storage area. The Rolling Oaks Sports Complex will benefit from the new plumbing that was reconfigured to the concession building, as well as upgrades and improvements made to the irrigation and drainage system. Additionally, at Rolling Oaks, they did extensive concrete work, pouring over seventy-five cubic yards of surface for the concrete patio. At the end of the year, they began completely repainting the interior of the home at Park on the River and completed that update in January 2018. They also broke ground on the city's new covered pavilion at Lake Willistee. Construction and installation of picnic tables was completed in January 2018. The pavilion is a welcome addition to the park and will be available for rental reservations in the spring. We anticipate it will be a popular location for gathering and social events for our community. In 2018, the Parks and Recreation Department will strive to continue improving upon the amenities and facilities that they currently manage, as well as looking for other projects and programs to offer the citizens of Malmell in the future. Planning and Zoning. In February, Kimberly-Clark was approved for a 42,600-square-foot expansion and later added forty-one new parking spaces. In May, Malmell became the first city in Central Arkansas to amend zoning regulations to accommodate dispensaries and cultivation facilities for medical marijuana as permitted uses. Staff received critical assistance in this endeavor from State Representative Doug House. July saw the city of Malmell submit a request for a new access point on Malmell Boulevard in relation to the Pine Forest Bypass Project. When completed, this project will greatly help traffic flow in the area. In October, the city received a $168,000 grant to help continue the White Oak Bio Wetland Management Plan. Police Department. The year 2017 saw some positive changes in criminal offenses reported to the Malmell Police Department, as well as a couple of categories that were not so positive. One of the most significant areas of improvement came in the category of residential burglaries, where there were seventy-seven such offenses reported in 2016 and only thirty-eight in 2017, for a decrease of 51%. The next positive thing to report is vehicle break-ins, which actually decreased in numbers from two-hundred-and-six in 2016 to 197 in 2017, a decrease of 4%. There was also a decrease in some of the most serious categories, rapes, which decreased from eleven in 16 to six in 2017, and robberies, which decreased from eight in 2016 to three in 2017. Unfortunately, all news is not good news, and our number of aggravated assaults increased substantially from twelve in 2016 to thirty-four in 2017. This accounts for an increase of 183%. A closer examination of these occurrences reveals that in 2017, there was a relative steady number of aggravated assaults each month, two or three, until November, December, where we had six such offenses each month. In addition, in 2016, we had a four-month period where no aggravated assaults were reported, an odd occurrence. Additionally, for pattern identification purposes, there were twenty-two aggravated assault reports taken in 2015, which makes 2016 an anomaly. So the bottom line is that the overall crime statistics remain fairly similar to last year, with the exceptions already outlined. Significantly, we experienced no homicides in Malmell in 2017, making that two years in a row without a homicide. In the Patrol Division, we responded to 12,864 calls for service in 2017 compared to 11,873 in 2016 for an 8% increase. We also increased the number of traffic stops from 2,287 in 2016 to 2,895 in 2017 for a 27% increase. These stops resulted in the issuance of 397 citations in 2016 and 533 citations in 2017 for a 34% increase. We also issued 1,593 warnings in 2016 and 2012 and 2017 for a 26% increase in our Better Slow It Down category. The Training Division was busy this year coordinating or conducting 1,851 hours of outside resource or in-service training in everything from racial profiling to Alzheimer's recognition and reaction to driving simulators to active shooting and tactical team training. This is an increase of 790 hours of training over the previous year and does not include the basic training for five of six new officers hired in 2017. Two of the new officers have completed their Field Training Officer training, and four are currently in the field training portion of their careers. Overall, I would say we had a good year with a clear understanding of the things we will need to address and a solid plan for the direction we are headed. Public Works. The year 2017 was an unforgettable year for the personnel at Public Works. Public Works is now operating under the leadership of our longtime colleague, Mike Hogan, as the Public Works Director. Mike had been employee of the city for over fourteen years. With new leadership comes new ideas and innovations, as well as challenges. The Public Works Department provides a majority of the services that the city residents and taxpayers expect, such as services related to roads, sidewalks, sanitation services, animal services, maintenance of public building, grounds, and rights-of-way grass, islands, streetlights along Odom Boulevard, and maintaining the multimillion-dollar fleet of vehicles and heavy equipment. These services are delivered through the administration and management of the multiple divisions within our Public Works Department to provide these services. These divisions include Public Works Administration, Animal Services, Maintenance, which consists of buildings, fleet and equipment, and grounds; Streets and Stormwater Management and Sanitation Services, which is responsible for overseeing the daily operation at the transfer station. Together, these divisions make up a diversified Public Works Department with a workforce totaling over forty-five employees. Our Streets and Stormwater Management Division had a change in leadership and operated under the newly-promoted Street Division Supervisor Jason Bargill. The division crew operates with four members in addition to the Street Sweeper Operator and a mechanic. During winter storm events, our crews also perform around-the-clock snow removal operations to clean and prepare city facilities for the next day's work. Operations is on-call and ready for mobilization when the phone rings. Our goal is to provide emergency and routine facilities, services in a timely and effective manner. In Animal Services Division, they had 5,404 visitors, which visited the animal shelter in person to look, adopt, reclaim, or just visit the animals. The visitors included school groups and children's volunteer groups. There were 5,773 calls for service requests. Total domestic animal intake was 667. Animal Services received 427 dogs and 240 cats in 2017. For comparison purposes, the total intake last year was 606 animals. Malmell Friends of the Animals spent $13,875 to pay for the spay, neuter surgeries for our animals before adoption. In addition to that amount, Malmell Friends of the Animal provided over $50,000 in funds for other medical needs or veterinarian services. We utilized many other independent volunteers throughout the year who came to help socialize the animals. Students used our facility in completing volunteer hours assigned from classes. We also utilized community service workers with nonviolent offenses. We feel we had a productive year and continue to offer valuable service to our community. Malmell Sanitation Division. Malmell residents continue to respond favorably to the efforts and hard work of the sanitation division. Our sanitation division provides curbside residential refuse leaf bulk brush and recycle collection and manages the day-to-day operations of the transfer station. Tonnage of recyclable materials collected has held steady since its implementation in February of 2014, with no significant increase or decrease in the weight of recyclables. Since beginning the single-stream curbside collection program in 2014, Malmell's recycling contamination for single-stream recycling connection is almost nonexistent in comparison to surrounding communities. The sanitation crew collected and disposed of approximately 5,000 tons of solid waste and 4,540 cubic yards of compacted yard waste. Maintenance Division. Fleet and Equipment has a team of two mechanics, including a mechanic two and mechanic one. They are primarily responsible for routine and preventive maintenance on the majority of the vehicles and equipment citywide. The Building Department has a team of three, which includes Division Supervisor and Operator One and Operator Two. They are responsible for the maintenance, construction, and repair of municipal buildings. The Grounds Department has a team of twelve full-time and three seasonal workers, which includes the department supervisor, grounds leadsman, several labors, operator ones, and an operator two. The Grounds Maintenance Department is fundamentally responsible for keeping Malmell the beautiful city it is. This twelve-member crew provided maintenance for the majority of the city's common area, along with the hundred-plus miles of streets and street rightaways, and maintained thirty-one miles of walking paths. In early 2017, Public Works started utilizing a great resource that we seldom utilized in the years past, an online website named GovDeals, which labels itself as a liquidity service marketplace. GovDeals provides services to various government agencies that allows them to sell surplus and confiscated items via the internet. These items sold for $62,143, which went back into the general fund to provide for operating costs. Public Works staff encourages each person to reuse and recycle. Senior Services. Senior Services experienced a tremendous amount of growth in all levels of service in 2017. During the first quarter of 2017, the new facility was completed, and the Senior Wellness Center operations moved from the lower-level Dean File City Center building to the new facility located at Two Club Manor Cove. Services to the public were suspended for four days to complete packing and to move items into unpacking the new facility. On the fourth day, a VIP reception was held for the volunteers and supporters of senior services, and the grand opening of the Malmell Center on the Lake was held the morning of March 3, 2017. The estimated attendance for both events was over 700 people. The new facility features dedicated cafe space, classroom, and exercise space. A new volunteer position, docent, was created to welcome new individuals to the facility and give tours to prospective new members. Membership for 2017 grew to almost 1,500 by years end as the direct results of new facility and the assistance of docents. The center staff produces a newsletter every two months for members to advertise about upcoming events and activities at the center. Programs, events, and activities increased as the operating hours increased from 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Monday through Friday, to 5:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. Monday through Thursday, and 5:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. on Friday and Saturday from 8:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. The total attendance at all events or activities in 2017 was 81,474. Special Projects. Special Projects continues to work on three grants. The city received a grant for the Edgewood Sidewalk Project, and the project is awaiting approval of the final design. The city has applied for another grant, Edgewood Sidewalk's Phase Two. If approved, this new grant will complete the sidewalk connection around the Charter School, Pine Forest Elementary School, Malmell Library, and the Beth Rutledge Tennis Center. These two grants will improve connectivity to all the rac walk trails around the city center. Work is continuing on Phase Three of the Wetlands Trail. This phase will be south of the Malmell Middle School. This trail will be 2,950-liner feet and will include a pier to allow collection of water samples and wildlife viewing. Projects. 2013 Bond Projects. The Count's Massive Extension. The roadway extension is complete. The water and sewer construction project for this area should be completed by the end of March 2018. Crystal Hill Road Project. The design is complete, but the right-of-way acquisition is continuing to delay the construction phase of this project. 2015 Bond Projects. City Hall Project. Selection of an architect will be made in the spring, summer of 2018 to develop a set of construction plans. Other major projects, the I-40 Interchange Project. The engineering and design plans have been done. At this time, a 90% summit of the plans was sent to the Arkansas Highway and Transportation Department in December of 2017. And that concludes the departmental summaries. As I said, I've got a letter that I want to read. We're doing pretty good. If you are. Members of the Malmell City Council, department heads, city employees, and my federal citizens, as required by Arkansas law, I'm pleased to report to you the State of the City of Malmell. During the Arkansas Municipal League Conference in Fort Smith in January, the city of Malmell won two honorable mentions in the Trendsetter City 2017 Awards presented by Arkansas Business, Cruisin' Associates, and the Arkansas Municipal League. The Malmell Police Department won an award in public safety for their citizens, Police Academy, and Malmell Center on the Lake won an award in the Tourism Development and Creative Culture category for building a unique venue that improves the quality of life for citizens. Congratulations to these two departments for their efforts and awards. In less than two years since the merger with Malmell Water Management, Central Arkansas Water has been able to complete a 30-inch transmission line to bring treated CAW water to Malmell. As of January 29, 2018, the entire city of Malmell now receives CAW water and not well water, as was the case for many years. Although it required a rate increase, the benefits for the customers is that it means a better quality of water and a long-term water supply for the future. North Rock Wastewater Utility constructed a 36-inch sewer interceptor as part of a phased project, which will allow the existing treatment plant in Malmell to be decommissioned. The wastewater treatment plant will move to an existing treatment plant located near the North Shore Industrial Park. A second phase of this project will begin later this year, which entails placing a force main from the existing treatment plant to the interceptor. force main from the existing treatment plant to the interceptor. Commercial and retail development continues to come to Mammel. US Pizza, Chick-fil-A, and Sonic all opened new facilities in two thousand seventeen on Track D. In addition to these commercial projects, we had several other large construction projects started in two thousand seventeen, in addition at the Mammel Library and additions and renovations at Kimberly-Clark and Molex in the industrial park. New facilities completed in two thousand seventeen were the Center on the Lake and the Mammel Charter High School. City of Mammel had an annual operating budget of just over eleven point seven million dollars, including capital items. With general fund reserves of more than five point one million dollars, this is well beyond the mandated amount of holding twenty percent in reserves. Street fund reserves are currently at three point one million dollars. The overall financial condition of Mammel remains strong during two thousand seventeen. Revenues in the general fund increased by three hundred and nine thousand one hundred and ninety-four dollars as compared to two thousand sixteen, and operating expenses were held below the budgeted expenses, even though they increased by six hundred and thirty thousand eight hundred and thirty dollars. There was a decrease in the fund balance of seven hundred and five thousand five hundred and ninety dollars for the year due to capital expenditures. The street fund balance decreased by seven hundred and thirty-three thousand two hundred and twenty-eight, also due to capital expenditures. The sanitation fund had a twenty thousand four hundred and fifty-nine dollar decrease in revenues, and there was a decrease in the sanitation fund retained earnings of eighteen thousand four twenty-three during two thousand seventeen. The city's sales tax was two thousand three hundred and fifty-four thousand and twenty-one dollars in two thousand seventeen, which was a decrease of one hundred and forty-one thousand and twenty-three dollars from the previous year. The county's sales tax collection was three million seven hundred and eleven thousand two hundred and thirty-three dollars, which was an increase of fifty thousand and thirty-five dollars from the previous year. The Mammel community is as vibrant as ever with a new energy coming from the businesses locating in Mammel. City employees are some of the best in their profession, and they genuinely care about this community and strive to do their best on a daily basis. Thank you for allowing me to serve you, serve you as the mayor of this wonderful community. Signed, Michael Watson, City of Mammel Mayor. I appreciate everybody's patience as we comply with a provision of the law to do with the state of the city. All right, if there's no other, if there's not any questions on that, we'll move on with the rest of our agenda. First item is we have the approval of the minutes from the February fifth regular meeting, and I think everybody was, I'm sorry, is this on this item or?
It was on your speech.
Okay, I'm sorry. Okay, all right.
It hit it a little late, so I wasn't going to say anything.
Okay, you're fine.
You talked about the final design plans on the interchange, and I think the, did you say the ninety percent were filed in December of two thousand seventeen?
That's correct.
So we still have yet to actually file the final?
We're waiting on the highways department's comments on the ninety percent.
What do you think the timetable is between the comments and when we actually, do we have the final plans ready?
Well, no, we can't make the final plans until we get the comments back from the highway department, but in talking to the engineers, I mean, there's not a lot you can change after ninety percent, because they reviewed them at thirty, at sixty, and at ninety percent, so.
So maybe their comments will be in by summer, and maybe?
I expect them in before summer, yes.
Okay, we may be filing those final plans by summer?
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
Yeah. All right, the next item is approval of the minutes from the February fifth regular meeting, and I think you were given an amended set at your desk tonight. Is there any other comments or questions on the minutes from the February fifth meeting? Councilmember Mosley?
I'd just make a motion that we go ahead and adopt the amended minutes. There was one item that was slightly changed on page three.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to amend the, or to approve the amended minutes of February the fifth with the slight change on page three. Is there any other discussion on that motion? If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no. Motion passes. Next item is public comment. I have one public comment card here tonight that is not on the agenda. It's Mr. Phillips. I'm not sure what the first name is. I can't read it. Eugene, I'm sorry. If you would, come to the podium and state your name and address for the record.
Eugene Phillips. I just moved to, where's my address here?
And that's, you live in North Rock and not Mammel. You're aware of that, right?
Yes.
Okay, all right, okay, all right.
But, you know, they consider me as Mammel as well, because of the zip code. Seven-two-one-one-three?
Yes, sir, it's a shared zip code between Mammel and North Rock. Yes, sir.
The comment I'm trying to make is, why are we paying a third party for our water when that third party be just eliminated?
When they what?
They could be eliminated.
I don't know what third party you're referring to.
Can I, can I, I appreciate, can I step up?
Well, no, sir, you need to stay at the microphone. Oh, you want to hand something? Were you talking about utility billing services? Is that what you're referring to?
Yes, yes, yes.
That's a wholly-owned subsidiary of Central Arkansas Water.
But we get the water from them now. There are third parties making us pay them as well. Everybody don't see it on the bill. I saw it. There's a lot of people just, they just go ahead and just pay the bill, but then look at the back of the bill.
Okay, well, utility billing service, the only people they bill for are Central Arkansas Water.
I already went down to the water company and debated the case.
Okay, okay.
Because why are we, good citizens like us, paying this, this third party? Because they can't seem to do their job.
Okay.
Right?
Yeah, and what I would recommend is that you go talk to the Central Arkansas Water's commissioners.
I'll go downtown then, again.
Well, they have a commission meeting once a month, and that's not talking to the staff, that's actually talking to the commissioners.
Do they?
Yes, ma'am, yes, sir. They have, I think it's a nine-member commission that oversees Central Arkansas Water.
Maybe I should get on that committee.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much, Mr. Phillips. Next item is the financial statement review, and we have Mrs. Shannon Vega with us tonight to present that.
She's going to pull up the presentation of the January two thousand eighteen financials.
I'm ready. Go to the first slide, please.
Okay, this is showing our fund balance at the end of January two thousand eighteen. As you can see, we're right at budget except on the street fund, which is one oh two, and that variance is due to some bills that we paid for the third entrance in advance, and then we get reimbursed eighty percent, and that total reimbursement that we're waiting on is five hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars. And so we'll be back in position like we expect to be. Next slide. One of the things that we need to keep in mind when we're looking at these graphs, because some of them are going to look odd because the budgets are at very high levels compared to the actuals, and that's due to, we have our budget, and we just do it divided by twelve, doesn't take into account seasonality. So most of the revenue sources are above or flat to prior year. On the franchise tax, let's see if I can get this thing to work. Okay, franchise tax is right here, and you see that two thousand seventeen is very high, and that was due to eighteen thousand dollars that were put in that line item that got corrected in a later year, or later in the year. And so we would be looking at a flat rate on our franchise fees. It was sixty-four thousand for two thousand seventeen and for two thousand sixteen. This is a street fund, and it's showing the state turnback. That's where the reclass was, sorry. The reclass of eighteen thousand dollars was there, and it's sixty-four thousand for both years. And see, on the county village graph, that's where the budget looks kind of weird, and that's what it's due to. Okay, the sanitation fee revenue. We bill quarterly, and so that's why that graph looks weird. All right, the general fund expenses, they're up compared to prior year, and that is due to being fully staffed this year compared to January and two thousand seventeen. And on the city services, the last graph, two thousand sixteen, I mean, two thousand seventeen, they recorded all of workers' comp in January across all funds. This shows the general fund by category, and as you can see, the police fund and the fire fund both are more than fifty percent of our budget. Street expenditures, again, the personnel, where the prior year is high, that's due to workers' comp. And then the green on the other operating expenses, it's high, and that has to do with the third entrance again. We spent one hundred and sixty-nine thousand in January, and we're expecting one hundred and thirty-five thousand back shortly. It's already been sent to the state. Sanitation, these expenses, again, it's up to, it's above due to workers' comp. If that workers' comp is taken out, then we're even, we're comparable to prior year. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
If there's not any question, I'd entertain a motion to approve the financial statement for January.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the financials for January. Is there any discussion on that motion? Now, all those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no. Motion passes. Next item is department reports, and since we do the financial statement at this meeting, we will do the department reports at the next meeting. Next item is procedural motion. I need a motion from the floor to read all resolutions and ordinances by title only.
Second.
A motion and a second to read all resolutions and ordinances by title only. Is there any discussion on that motion? If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no. Motion passes. Next item is unfinished business. First item under unfinished business and memo and pictures regarding Twenty-One Garden Oaks Drive. If y'all remember, Ms. Betty Dunn came to the council at the last meeting, and she was questioning about the water that was draining over the alleyway, and so I provided pictures that were, one of the pictures that I provided is the alleyway prior to the alleyway being constructed, and if you look at the blue area that's drawn on there, it's pointing at the water that's draining over the curb, or draining over the alleyway at the northwest corner of that alley where it intersects Garden Oaks Drive. And then you can, you can tell it's the prior two pictures, if you look just down from there, you can see dirt actually in the alleyway. You can see clods of, or just broken concrete is what you're seeing to the south of that area. And then if you go to the next picture, it's the aerial photograph after the alley was, repair was done, and the arrow's in the same place, and there's still water draining over that same corner right there, so. And if you'd rather look at a bigger picture, I've got some, and Madam City Clerk has some bigger pictures if you want to look at those. Councilmember Mosley?
So I'm trying to figure out what the conclusion was, is that it's just a groundwater episode that has nothing to do with the alleyway we're repairing, and so it's just Mother Nature, so there's no action going to be taken by the city, is that correct?
Well, that is correct. We're still, we asked CAW, and they were asked during construction to look at this, and they said it wasn't a water leak at that time. If you drive all along Garden Oaks Drive, there's water coming out of everybody's yard over the curb and gutter, because it's a pretty good hillside right there. And so we might do some, we might do some concrete curb repair in that area. There's some curb that's busted up that's out in the street that's not part of the alleyway. We might do some work there, but we wouldn't do anything additional to the alleyway. But we think it's just groundwater. I mean, we don't know, it was draining there before, and the reason I knew about this situation, the contractor couldn't get it dried up to put the alleyway in there, and he was having trouble trying to get it dried up, so. But I talked to Ms. Dunn on the phone, and she seemed satisfied with the report I gave her also.
Okay, great. Thank you, sir.
Councilmember Anderson?
I just wanted to clarify, so I noticed that in her picture, it didn't seem like that curb from, came all the way to the street, and that's what you're going to repair?
Well, it does come all the way to the curb and gutter. It didn't come all the way to the asphalt.
Yes.
And that's what we're talking about repairing, yes, sir.
Thank you.
Yeah. Be the actual two-foot curb that's adjacent to the asphalt. There's, you know, there's curb and gutter, yeah. All right. Next item is the third ordinance, number nine forty-eight, to revise a portion of the city code. Madam City Clerk, if you'd do the third reading, please.
Being enacted by the City Council of the City of Mammel, County of Plaski, State of Arkansas, an ordinance to be entitled ordinance number nine forty-eight, and ordinance amending chapter two of the Mammel City Code.
Motion to approve ordinance nine forty-eight?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve ordinance number nine forty-eight. Is there any discussion on that motion? If not, Madam City Clerk, roll call, vote.
Councilmember Mosley?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilmember Saunders?
Yes.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Councilmember Timmons?
Yes.
Councilmember Vaprazan?
Yes.
And Councilmember Holt?
Next item is the second reading of ordinance number nine forty-nine to amend the master zoning map. Madam City Clerk, if you'd read that by title only?
Being enacted by the City Council of the City of Mammel, County of Plaski, State of Arkansas, an ordinance to be entitled ordinance number nine forty-nine, and ordinance amending the Mammel zoning map and for other purposes.
To approve ordinance number nine forty-nine?
We're on second reading.
Second reading.
I'm going to do that in two weeks then.
Okay, all right.
Jumping gun.
That's all right, I tried it on the first one.
We do have, we do have representatives from the real estate company, Mr. Jim Irwin, and then I think we have representatives from Stericycle here, and Mr. Jim Neri is here too, if there's any questions for any of these gentlemen. All right, well, thank y'all very much for being here, being here to answer any questions. And this will be on third reading at the next meeting, which is March the fifth, and you won't have to sit through a state of the city the next time, I promise. Next item is new business. The first item under new business is Councilmember Ward Two Appointment. Councilmember Anderson?
Thank you, Mayor. Like I stated in our last meeting, I wanted to ask the council to think about appointing me to position, or Ward Two, position one, and I gave my thoughts on that, on, you know, giving stability to the ward and allowing the appointee to be elected in the next election. So, that being said, I'm recusing myself from any discussion from this matter and voting on this. Thank you.
Thank you. The, the way this is typically done is that we would like to ask every applicant that's applied for this position to go to the Blue Room so that there's not an unfair advantage to someone that, because if, and we would go in the order that they're listed here, so number one would hear the question, and, or number one would have to answer the questions without hearing the questions ahead of time, and so we can't force you to do it. It's an open public meeting, but we would ask that all the applicants, other than number one, retire to the Blue Room, and then everybody would be... and then everybody would be asked questions by the council to be appointed. All right. You're gonna have to go too.
I'm just gonna stay. I'm not, been addressed anymore, so.
But you may be asked questions.
Oh, okay.
That's what I'm saying as an applicant.
I just don't feel like it's necessary.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Councilmember Mosley?
Yeah, I would strongly encourage you to go ahead and go through the process, sir.
No, thank you.
So, are you gonna answer questions by the council?
If they have any questions for me, but I've pretty much said what, how I felt about the matter. It's not, it's not like I'm applying for the position.
Mayor, why don't, you said that we normally go in the order in which they're listed. If Councilmember Anderson does not want to go in this order, then why not let him go first? And that way, there's not an unfair advantage. Because I intend to ask the same questions of everybody.
Okay. All right, since it's a change in the order, I'm gonna ask for a motion from the council to do that.
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
Second.
I have a motion and a second that we change the order and have Councilmember Anderson go first. Councilmember Mosley?
Again, I'd ask Alderman Anderson to go ahead and go with the regular procedure. You could be accused of giving yourself an unfair advantage and fearing questions first if we don't do this and we're actually, you're asking for special treatment here and I don't think you should do that.
Well, the reason that I don't want to is because there's no other sitting alderman here and I'd like to at least listen in on the discussion that's being done for the ward that I represent. I'm not trying to give myself any kind of unfair advantage. If you don't want to ask me the questions, that's fine. But I want to listen to what's going on concerning the Ward Two. But I have recused myself from being in the discussion and from voting, so.
Actually, a proper recusal should be to leave the room, is...
That's according to you, sir.
Yes, sir, you're right. That's my, that's my very strong opinion.
Well, I understand.
And a recusal, I'm not gonna say that it requires you to leave the room, but it does mean you don't enter into any discussion, period, including this part of it, is what I would say.
That's what I was intending, not answering any questions, sir.
Okay. Councilmember Holt?
I'm a little confused. What exactly procedure are we voting on? The, he is still an alderman and he has not resigned, is that correct?
That is correct.
So, are we voting to allow him to resign and what are we voting on?
You're voting on the order of, to allow Councilmember Anderson to go first in the questioning of the applicants. That's all you're voting on. He does not have to resign in order to apply for this position.
I thought you said at the last meeting, an all-honorable Mr. Mayor, that in order for him to do this, that he would have to resign first.
No.
And that was at the very end of the meeting.
No, sir, I did not say that. He would only have to resign to take the position. You can run for your office and you don't have to resign. If you've been elected to that office, you can run for reelection and you don't have to resign. It's no different than that. You're, he's just a candidate for the position right now.
If he's a candidate, then I would, I would think that he would be as all the other candidates are and leave the room and we would continue with our discussion. Rather than sit here as an alderman.
Well, he is still an alderman. He is still a council member.
Right, or a council member, right, sorry.
Yes. But he's chosen not to leave the room. Councilmember Mosley?
I have two questions for the city attorney. Does the city attorney have an opinion on whether he should?
Would you please turn the flash off, please?
Is it off now?
No, I'm just talking...
Oh, okay. My question is, I'm sorry, it threw me off.
Sorry, you were going to ask the city attorney two questions.
Okay, I had two questions. Do you have a strong opinion, one way or the other, on whether Alderman Anderson should recuse? And also, are we absolutely sure he does not need to resign beforehand? Have you studied that act?
Yes, there's not a whole lot on this issue and so, let me make sure the mic is going. The question that I was really looking at was that was there anything that would prevent a city council member seeking appointment to a different position? And I didn't find any prohibitions. What I, the way I kind of thought about it, it's in the absence of any prohibitions that you would treat it just like anything else. And I think the mayor kind of summarized it accurately, that it's not too dissimilar than, say, when I was elected city attorney. I was sitting on the council up until prior to the point that I took office as city attorney. So, I had to resign my city council seat prior to doing that. I've seen nothing that prohibits a sitting alderman from being nominee for an appointment. There's no city regulations or state prohibitions. There are some state statutes that allow it in cities, but those provisions don't specifically apply to a city of our class with population. So, absence of prohibition, there's nothing preventing it. As to whether he should recuse, I believe Mr. Anderson has said that he will recuse. The best advice I could give is that this isn't an open meeting, that the city cannot exclude someone from the meeting by force, especially someone on the city council. Does that answer your questions?
Yes, sir, thank you.
Councilmember Anderson?
Like I stated before, I intend on recusing from all discussions. So, if you ask questions, my answer is gonna be that I'm recusing myself from it. So, if that helps ease your mind, I'm not going to answer those questions because I feel like that's part of the discussion. I gave my opinion on how we should go from a precedent that was set way before my time and I am recusing myself from all discussion, including questions that were asked, that are asked from the council. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we have a, we have a motion before the floor to allow Councilmember Anderson to go first in this discussion. Is there any more discussion on that? Councilmember Vaprazan?
I don't think it's necessary for me to make a motion because Councilmember Anderson's not gonna say anything, so. It doesn't matter, we don't need to put him up front. He's not gonna say anything anyway, so it really doesn't matter.
Okay, so you're withdrawing your motion?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Councilmember Mosley?
Yeah, and I would disagree with Councilmember Anderson that there is not a standing precedent on what you were asking to do. The most recent one was Councilmember Scott when she resigned and we did not do the same for Preston Lewis.
That wasn't requested.
Pardon?
For Scott, I didn't request.
No, I'm not talking about you.
Councilmember Anderson?
I understand that it hasn't been done in every case, but it's still a precedent that's been done before in the past. In order for it to be a precedent, it doesn't have to do, happen every time. But, I mean, that's, that's fine. I'm just saying that that's how it was done in the past. It was done, I've been on the council for almost eight years and that's, it actually was probably done incorrectly according to the city attorney. And I don't dispute that. And so, I agree to go along with this change in the way that we do it. But I don't agree with sitting out while y'all discuss the ward that I represent. So, in order to do that, I have to recuse myself from all discussion so I can at least listen in on how this proceedings goes forward. If you, if the council so chooses not to appoint me, that's the council's opinion. That's fine and I will honor it. But I want to be in on the discussion because I'm the sole person who is representing Ward Two right at this moment. And I unfortunately have the weird situation of trying to apply for a position, but also trying to represent. And I'm sorry that that makes you uncomfortable, but this is the best way that I felt, that I feel comfortable representing the ward. So, I'm gonna recuse myself from all discussion. I told the council how I felt about why we would want to appoint me in that position. If that's not the council's will, then that's fine. I agree with it, I'll go along with it and I won't vote on it. Thank you.
Okay, all right. At this time, we will hear from Marion Scott Coney regarding the Councilmember Ward Two appointment. If you would, state your name and address for the record, please.
Marion Scott, 118 Osage Drive, Mammell. And I do want to clarify my name. I had the name Scott for forty-eight years before I got married. And when you're the age I am, every piece of business I've conducted for the last forty-eight years is in the name Scott. Out of love and respect for my husband, I am also known as Marion Scott Coney or Marion Coney, but my legal name is Marion Scott.
Thank you very much. If, I know all the council members have your letter in their packet, but if you want to just tell us a little bit about yourself, Ms. Scott?
Well, I've been pretty, I've been, no offense, baby. I've been very active in the city since I came here in two thousand and six. Literally thousands of hours of volunteerism on various committees and doing things on behalf of the city. And as I said in my letter, some of them are silent, so nobody knows that they're going on and some of them are pretty noisy. So, I'm not afraid to speak my opinion because by golly, if you don't stand for something, you'll fall for anything. And so, I'm not afraid to give my opinion or to take a stand on issues that I feel are important for the citizens of Mammell. In my letter of application, you can see what my educational background is, what my business background is. One thing I didn't mention that I'm very, very proud of is I'm a lifetime member of FI Capify, which is an invitation-only honor society. And I attained that when I went to college. So, I didn't put that down, but I was very proud of it. So, I thought I would mention it tonight. And I'm anxious to answer any questions. I saw the questions that had been submitted to Mr. Moore and I thought they were very well-done, very well-thought-out. But if you would like to know where I stand on any of those things, I'm at your disposal.
Councilmember Holt?
Good evening, Ms. Scott.
Mr. Holt.
Nice to see you, thank you. I'm Jess Holt. I've asked, I've written down five questions, so they're all for everyone and it may feel a little uncomfortable in some ways for individuals. Number one is, do you make attendance at a city council a priority? And are there other commitments that may cause you to miss meetings?
Since two thousand and six, I can count on the fingers of one hand the number of council meetings I've missed. So, they've been a priority for me. I missed one meeting when I was on the council because I got stuck in Hot Springs without transportation and didn't make it back in time, but that's the only meeting I've missed. Not only have I come to all of the council meetings, I've made it to the last three years of budget meetings as well.
Good, thank you, ma'am. Number two, you really have already answered. You have a history of having been active as a community volunteer or active in community issues and you've mentioned some of those already unless there's others that you'd like to go ahead and...
Well, I have a pretty long list of the things that I've done and I'm glad to read them to you if you like. I need to put on my spectacles.
If you don't mind, that'll be fine.
I was on the Mammell Tree Board, the originating Mammell Tree Board that made us a Tree City USA. I've been on the White Oak Bayou Steering Committee since its inception. I was a member of the Mammell Players and have been in a few plays. I was a very active volunteer at the Mammell Senior Wellness Center. I still am a volunteer for CareLink Meals on Wheels. I was on a research committee for the ADHOC ANP Tax Initiative when they were exploring whether or not that was something that Mammell wanted to do. I was on the Mammell City Elected Official Salary Committee, so the money you make is partly my fault. I'm on the Mammell Hometown Thanksgiving Committee. It's one of the things, it's the highlight of my year. It's the thing that I enjoy doing the very most. I was a member of the Mammell Citizens Association, Mammell Chamber of Commerce. I have been a sitting alderman. I was on the Mammell Citizens Association, what they called their kitchen cabinet. In other words, that was sort of an advisory board. I have attended the Police Academy twice and the Fire Academy once. I used to clean City Hall on Sundays, Sunday mornings, because our parks and street people were so busy that they couldn't come up here and blow off the leaves and pull the weeds out of the cracks. And so, every Sunday morning, I would be here blowing out the weeds and pulling the weeds out of the cracks and making our City Hall look as well as it could look. So, those have been my city activities. I'm, I was a, I've been a marathon runner for a number of years. Came in second in my age category last, or year before last and third in my age category the year before that, which just lets you know how few people my age actually still do that sort of thing. I'm a mother, grandmother and I was Citizen of the Year in two thousand and fifteen.
Well, if you'd gotten paid for all of that, you'd be well off. The handbook for municipal officials allows for certain conditions in relationships that does not cause a conflict of interest. Are you aware of any personal relationship, whether it be with an organization of special interest groups, that may cause you to recuse yourself when voting on issues that bother the city?
That's a good question. I actually looked up conflict of interest because I was interested in seeing if any of the activities in which I engage would be considered a conflict of interest. And it says that it's a situation in which a person in a position, is in a position to derive personal benefit from actions or decisions made in their official capacity. I have nothing personal to gain from anything that I do except a sense of deep satisfaction. I haven't earned money in a very long time. And actually, I like the freedom of that. So, I do not believe that I'm doing anything that produces a conflict of interest.
Good, thank you. There are times when voting that you may need to stand alone on an issue, perhaps finding yourself standing alone, in your opinion. Are you willing to speak out in support of your position in behalf of the constituents in your ward and the city at large, even though you may not, others may not like what you have to say?
Yes, I remember when I was on the council, one of the items of business that came up before the council was chickens. Everybody remember chickens? I personally had no problem with chickens. I liked chickens, I was raised on a farm, I loved their eggs, that kind of thing. But the majority of my constituents with whom I spoke were deathly against chickens. So, I voted against my will for the will of the public. Another time during a budget session, we had to make a very difficult decision and I was the only one that voted on behalf of that decision. So, I'm not afraid to stand alone. I think that if you do stand alone, you need to have good reasons why and to be able to express those. So, no, I am not afraid.
Sometimes we have to yield a little bit, though, right?
That's correct.
Are you willing to speak out at council meetings and not remain silent? Do you think it is important to share in the discussion and make your opinion heard?
I truly think that you have a period of time where you have to gather information. You can't make an informed decision if you don't have all the facts. So, there is a period of time when you might be a little quieter and listen. But when you have made up your mind, when you have decided the utilitarian purpose that you support is for the good of the majority, then at that point, you do need to speak up and say why you feel the way you do and how you stand.
Great, thank you. Your answers are excellent and I appreciate your patience. Thank you, ma'am.
Councilmember Saunders?
Thank you, Mayor. I only have four questions and I almost feel a little silly asking you because I know you and you've been on the council recently enough. But my motivation is I want to ensure we have other people that have not been on council that I know of and I just want to make sure that they know what they're getting into and what city council is all about, you know? So, I'm gonna ask you these four questions, just... Just bear with me.
That's fine.
And I'll ask the remaining candidates the same questions. Approximately how many council meetings did you attend in the last two years where you did not attend for a specific issue?
All of them, except one, I think, in the last two years.
I almost feel silly asking you these questions. Number two, what are the purposes of city council?
I think the city council is to, number one, carry out the business of the city. You know, to help in the decision-making process, to make the rules, to be a watchdog for the citizens, to, to do the will of the people. But one of the questions that I used to ask is, under what circumstances would you vote against the will of your constituents? And the answer to that, there were, I think I had two answers to that. And one is that if you had more information than your constituents did, but then what? It's our responsibility to get that information out to them. Or if for some reason, the internal workings of the council, for example, the budget. A lot of people don't understand the budget and why we have to do what we have to do, the painful decisions that have to be made. So in that case, you may have the community demanding a swimming pool, but the budget says you can't do that. So those are really about the only two circumstances that I can think of that you would vote against the will of your constituents. So it's, it's our job to make the laws in the form of ordinances and to produce and vote on resolutions, which are the, sort of the operating parameters of the city. And I think more than anything, it's important that we're good examples for the rest of the community, that our ethics are the highest they can be. There's no such thing as alternate ethics.
Okay. Very good. Number three, and you've touched on it a little bit, on what basis will you make your decisions on voting issues? Well, that's it.
Yeah.
On what basis?
On the best information I can get and in a utilitarianism view. And that, that is the greatest good for the greatest number.
And lastly, what meetings, other than council meetings, do you anticipate attending during the typical year?
I have attended several planning commission meetings. I've been, of course, to the civil service commission. And one time, I even appeared at the, oh, who are the ones that do the finances?
The Facilities Board.
The Facilities Board. I actually even went to one of their meetings. Boy, you should have seen the looks. I think it's important to go and kind of see how things work, and that's really why, why I go. Sometimes I go to the planning commission just because I sort of like to know what's going on. Plus, we represent the council and the planning commission at least a couple of times a year.
Thank you, Mrs. Coney.
You're welcome, Mr. Saunders.
Councilmember Mosley?
Okay. Okay, I've got three questions here I'm going to be asking of everybody. And I'd, I'd like to, City Attorney Norris to, to watch me on a couple of things.
Uh-oh.
I'm going to be asking questions about perhaps past employment, education, that sort of thing, and I just want to make sure I don't ask an inappropriate question.
Just don't ask me how old I am?
I'm sixty-eight.
Things like that. Anyway, I appreciate it. Thank you. Yeah, let me, let me, on, on the candidates, each one, well, not all of them actually, touched on their education, work experiences and things like that. Some had very detailed resumes, and some folks kind of glossed along and that sort of thing. And I wanted to ask you a little bit more detail about, about your
Okay.
...education to start with. You'd, you'd mentioned you, you know, I've, I've been a little vague over the years. You talk about engineering and things like that. But it looks like you actually went to a, a, and I assume it's a four-year university?
Yes. Eastern Oregon University. I graduated from Eastern Oregon University.
Okay. And it's kind of a small university?
It is. I was a non-traditional student, so I took a lot of my classes online, but I did have to be on campus for a number of classes a year, and so I would have to arrange my schedule in order to get there. I've also gone to University of Kansas, or Kansas State University and University of Michigan.
Okay. Okay.
Spokane Falls, Spokane Community, Portland State. I went to college off and on for, well, more on than off for thirty years.
Okay. When did you actually graduate from Eastern Oregon University?
Nineteen ninety-seven.
And, and you're, you, you talk about postgraduate work. Were you talking education or are you talking work experiences?
No, postgraduate work. I actually attended what they called a mini MBA at Kansas State and at Michigan State, where we would go and, they were for, like, people who were on a management track through our company. When I was in engineering, I actually went to engineering school for a whole summer and learned some more about engineering, electrical theory, AC/DC theory, those kinds of things. And then the mini MBA, we went through advanced accounting, a lot of ethics, business courses, those kinds of things. I have about three hundred college credits.
Okay. So, so you got college credit for these, these summer courses and...
Mostly, I took them because they helped me with what I was doing.
Right.
You know, I mean, you have a degree plan, and you take the degree plan and you get the degree. But so many times, you graduate and you really don't have what you need to live in the real world.
Exactly.
So these other classes were more like real world.
So what was your actual, did you, you actually have a bachelor's and...
A Bachelor of Science degree and I majored in Business and Psychology.
And there's actually a degree that's Business and Psychology?
Liberal Studies.
So it's a bachelor in Liberal Studies?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Okay. All right. And, and, okay, so you, you retired? Did you retire or?
Yes.
Layoff or anything?
No, I retired.
Okay. And, and came here in two thousand and six?
Yes.
So basically, you, you've not done, you've not worked since before two thousand and six?
I haven't worked for money since two thousand and six, except for the time that I was on the council.
All right. Okay, I think we've covered that. Okay, let's, let's, my next subject area question is getting into conflict interest.
Okay.
You know, I always ask that.
Yes.
And you actually mentioned a city code talking about ethics. And the ethics talk about representing citizens of your ward fairly and equally and that sort of thing. It also talks about, talks about reframing from the appearance or whatever, being involved with special interest groups. And that, now, in your case, you, you actually, and it appears that you represent probably the, the largest special interest group in Maumell. You're, you're representing a vision group, which is actually the development community and, and builders and things like that, promoting growth and such thing. It, it, it would give the appearance that perhaps you are going to be on the council to promote that special interest.
Is that what you think?
It, it appears that you are on it, you would be getting on the council to do that. Would you address that? And, and how, how would you recuse and that sort of thing? I do not see that it would be appropriate probably to vote on anything to do with this interchange and, and bonds and that sort of thing. What?
Really?
Yes.
Because I have nothing personal to gain from that?
Please go ahead and elaborate.
Okay. We are a pluralistic society. There isn't anyone on this council or any elected official or anyone in the audience who is not a member of some kind of a special interest group by virtue of what you are, who you are, when you were born, what you do for a living, what your hobby is. There are some people on this council who want an all-inclusive playground. There are other people on this council who want free transportation for seniors so they can age in place. There are people in this council who prove that octogenarians are still a viable commodity. There are people on this council who are in the business of selling, of saving souls. There are people on this council who care about getting arts in the hands and the minds of every child, no matter what their background is. And there are people in this council who advocate for their wards. New trails. So being involved, caring about your city, caring about your ward, there isn't anyone here who, who doesn't meet that description. I am a member of Maumell Vision for the Future. And even as a councilperson, whether I'm a councilperson or not a councilperson, these are things that I believe in. I believe we need more economic growth. I believe in the strategic plan. I believe we need another way out of town. I believe we need to relieve the congestion on our boulevard. I don't know of anyone sitting here who believes otherwise. How we accomplish that, that's the rub. Because my idea of how we accomplish that and your idea of how we accomplish that may be two different ideas, but it doesn't mean that either of them is wrong. It just means that either of them is something that should be decided and discussed and voted on by the citizens. I do not consider that a conflict of interest, just like I don't consider wanting better walking trails for your ward a conflict of interest. You're looking out for the interests of the citizens of Maumell. And that's exactly what I'm doing and what I intend to do if I'm back on the council.
Very, very eloquent. I think, I think you thought of that, so, thought about that. My suggestion would be that, I guess I would rather see you actually just run for the seat up here in, in two thousand and eighteen as opposed to seek and let the voters go ahead and make a decision just because you, you do have, have an apparent conflict. And it appears, there's an appearance, is what I'm saying. So, but I'm going to let it go. That's all I have to say.
Well, the election is the thirteenth, and then it'll be over.
Right.
And that's, what, a couple of weeks away? Two, three weeks away?
All right. And that's really it. The last question covers, covers some, if you have any specific city issue that's on your mind you'd like to mention.
We need money. We need revenue.
So I mean, if you want to elaborate on that, go right ahead.
No, I really don't have anything else. I, oh, were there other questions?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Councilmember Vaperson?
Oh, I just want to remind, remind Councilmember Mosley that he spoke at an event sponsored by this special interest group.
I, I didn't speak in favor.
You were non-committal.
Yeah, I was non-committal.
You didn't have anything?
I don't think that matters.
You didn't have anything to gain, neither did I.
I was there to just participate like everybody else.
Yeah. She's a participant.
She's, she's a spokesman.
Okay.
Okay.
It's okay.
Okay. I've got another light on. Did, did you have a question, Councilmember Vaperson, or is that it?
No, that was it.
Okay. Councilmember Williams?
Ms. Scott?
Yes, ma'am.
You left out one very, very, very important group that you're a member of, and that's the Jeff, Jeff Galloway Running Group.
That's right.
And I think of all the applicants, you're the one I've known the longest and the most. And I am new here, and I appreciate your willingness to serve in all areas that you do.
Thank you.
And it's always a pleasure to work with you.
Thank you.
And I look forward to it.
Thank you.
In the future.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Timmons?
Ms. Scott?
Yes, ma'am.
I had one question for you, but I think I'm going to pass it along. I appreciate your time and your patience and your commitment to the community.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Ms. Scott? If not, thank you very much, Ms. Scott.
I have just one other statement.
Okay, okay, all right.
Winston Churchill said, "To each there comes a time in their lifetime, a special moment when they're figuratively tapped on the shoulder and offered the chance to do a very special thing, unique to them and fitted to their talents. What a tragedy if that moment finds them unprepared or unqualified for that which could have been their finest hour." I feel qualified. I feel prepared. Councilmember Mosley? Councilmember Saunders? You can't vote. Councilmember Williams? Councilmember Timmons? Councilmember Vaperson? Councilmember Holt? I'm asking for your vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Scott. Our next applicant is Mr. Wallace Montgomery. Jack will be bringing him.
Need to be quicker getting a city clerk for this. We're getting intermissioned? Because they all have thirty minutes.
We gonna need one?
Take my arm?
You got to stand.
Just a walkout?
I'm not leaving.
I know, we saw that.
Are you, Mr. Montgomery?
What was it, sir?
If, if you would, state your name and ad, you're fine, right there. That's where you're supposed to be.
All right.
So if you would, state your name and address for the record, and then we've got a copy of your resume and your cover letter that you sent with it. But if you want to tell us a little bit about yourself, you're welcome to do that. And then the council members have some questions for you.
Yes, sir. All right. Good evening. My name is Wallace Montgomery. My address is 109 Highland Point Cove here in Maumell. And kind of as my letter of entry stated, I'm Arkansas-born and bred, so I, I love, I love the state here. I'm from El Dorado originally. I went to University of Arkansas at Pine Bluff on a band scholarship, where I also graduated there with a Bachelor of Arts in History. I also met my lovely wife there, Jennifer, who assisted me there tonight through this experience. Thank you for that. We've been married for nine years, and for five of those, we've actually lived here in Maumell. We purchased our first home here. I actually consider Maumell home. And I guess something that I like about the city would be that is, I consider it like a spa for free. You know how you normally have to go to a spa and pay, but here you could just go on any walking trail or Lake Willistine, or like I try to do every morning, do my three miles to be able to fit my suits here. So, and that's, that's actually a true story. She can attest to that. But really, the reason I was here is that, you know, I had a situation where, adverse situation where when the water was changed, my, my water began to be chalky. And I went and spoke with some other homeowners, and they said it was probably calcium deposits. And I believe that's what it was. But that really piqued my interest and say, hey, I want to get involved, not necessarily about a title or any money. I just want to be involved. I want to know, like, what's going on and be able to inform others of that as well. And so that's my main reason for being here. And with all that being said, thank you for the opportunity, and I know that you all have plenty of questions for me now.
Councilmember Saunders?
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you for applying, Mr. Montgomery.
Thank you, sir.
Just as a matter of information, I am asking the same questions of everybody that comes to the podium.
Yes, sir.
So, and my goal is to assure, at least in my mind, that you know what the council is about and what's going on here.
Yes, sir.
Okay? Number one, approximately how many council meetings did you attend in the last two years where you did not attend for a specific issue?
Honestly, sir, this would be my first meeting. And as I said, once I learned of that issue, I wanted to become involved, but due to the time, this would be my first meeting. Now, what I did do, due to some wise counsel, I did go back and research or go online and look at previous, recent meetings to kind of be abreast of what was going on. But quite honestly, sir, this is my first meeting.
Okay. Okay.
Yes, sir.
I like honesty.
Yes, sir.
Okay, number two, what are the purposes of the city council? What do we do?
Oh, okay. The purposes, from my understanding, from the, from the research that I've conducted, it would be able to address the needs or, or meet the needs of the current constituents from each ward. There are four wards here, two, two aldermen per ward, so to be able to address those issues of the ward, and not only that, to be able to deal with issues of, from the planning commission such as zoning or ordinances and things such as that, sir.
Okay. Number three, on what basis will you make your decisions on voting issues? On what basis?
Oh, that's, that's an easy one for me. I base my issues on facts. I know within politics, feelings don't matter, or if you like a person, dislike a person, I wanna stay neutral and base it solely on the facts.
Okay. Okay, and my last question.
Yes, sir.
What meetings, other than city council meetings, do you anticipate attending during a typical year?
I would like to also participate in the planning commission to learn more about that. Of course, I've researched it online, but I wanna actually become more engaged, not only with city council meetings, but also planning commission meetings as well, to, you know, it's one thing to read it online, but it's another thing to actually see how it plays out in real-life application, so planning commission.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
That's all I had, Mr. Montgomery.
Thank you, Councilmember Sanders. Thank you, sir.
Councilmember Holt?
Good evening, Mr. Montgomery.
Good evening.
I've read your resume. It's impressive, to say the least.
Thank you, sir.
I do have, like others, I have five questions that I specifically ask each member, so they're not pointed to any one person. Item one is making attendance at a council, is that a priority for you? And are you, do you have other commitments that may cause you to miss council meetings?
No, sir. Thank you for that question, Councilmember Holt, but no, sir, I don't have any other hindrances that would cause me to miss, and the, being, being present at a council, at a council meeting is of the utmost importance to me.
Thank you. I appreciate your answer.
Thank you, sir.
The Handbook for Municipal Officers allows certain conditions and relationships that does not cause a conflict of interest. Are you aware of any personal relationship, whether it be with an organization of special interest groups, that may cause you to recuse yourself when voting on issues for the city?
Well, I wanna make sure I understand you correctly, Councilmember Holt. You want to know if I'm present, at, right now, if I'm, if I'm involved in any special interest groups that will sway my decision?
Do you have any, any special interest groups that you would have to say, I'm in, I'm involved in that particular subject and I will have to recuse myself and not vote?
No, sir, I'm not involved in any special interest groups in, in any nature.
Or, or personal relationships or anything that would cause you?
No, sir. No, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir, you're welcome.
There are times when voting that you may need to stand on an issue and perhaps find yourself standing alone, in your opinion. Are you willing to speak out in support of your position in behalf of the constituents in your ward and at the city at large, although others may not like your opinion? What do you have to say?
Yes, sir, I don't have a problem standing alone. I believe in taking the, the road less traveled. That's kind of, you know, how my life is, has just been designed from, from, from the beginning to today, like I'm 32 and I don't know if it's too many people under 35 in the room, so I kinda walk to the beat of my own drum, and, you know, if I see something that needs to be done, I just try to, you know, I don't expect anyone else to do it, I just say, hey, I can go learn. Yes, sir.
With, you have a very strong voice, and I believe that people will listen when you speak.
Thank you, thank you, Councilmember Holt.
Are you willing to speak out at the council meetings and not remain silent? Do you think it's important to share in the discussions and make your opinion heard?
Yes, I do think it's important to share in discussion, because what we learn from dialogue is that I can learn from you, Councilmember Holt, and then you would also be able to learn from me, with us having two different experiences in life, and, but what that would do is, we both want Maumell to be the best that it can be, so by me being willing to share in dialogue with someone different than me, only benefits Maumell, and that's what we both want at the end of the day.
I appreciate your answers. I can tell that you're very convicted about those answers. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Holt.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Councilmember Mosley?
Yes, I appreciate you putting your name in, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Mosley.
I've, I've read your resume too. I, let me ask you just briefly.
Yes, sir.
I understand you majored in history.
Yes, sir.
University of Arkansas, Pine Bluff.
Yes, sir.
Graduated in 2010.
Yes, sir.
Had numerous activities there. And tell us, tell us briefly, you're currently employed with I Promise Youth Group?
Yes, sir, so I, basically I work with kids there. They, I don't like the term at-risk youth, I don't believe in that. You know, I had a dad, so I knew how to act, 'cause I was getting whooped if I acted otherwise, you know what I mean? So, I don't believe in the term at-risk youth, I just think you need to kind of be able to, certain kids need more attention than others, you know what I mean? And so, one way may not work, it's not a cookie cutter image, you know, in terms of education. So, what I, what I did there, I'm no longer there, but what I did there was, I basically took what they would call at-risk youth and showed them life outside of what, what they currently would see. So, we took them to a Memphis Grizzlies game, but I also took them to a college tour at the University of Memphis to say that, hey, yeah, we wanna have fun, but we wanna make it educational as well, and we wanna get you outside of the southwest portion of Little Rock, to so, so you can see that there's life outside of that, so this doesn't have to just be your reality if you choose to do something different.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
So, you're not employed there right now?
No, sir, I actually started position with St. Vincent on Monday.
Well, congratulations.
Thank you, Ms. Councilmember Mosley, so. I know my wife and I are both happy about that. Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Very, very good, let's see. Councilmember Holt actually covered my question as far as conflicts of interest pretty well, so I'm not gonna ask you that.
Yes, sir.
Any, is there any particular city issue that is brewing at this point that's on your, on your mind and any opinion you might have about it?
Well, of course, I know we all have been speaking about the sales tax issue and the, in regards of the third entryway. I can't say that my, my, excuse me, one moment, my actual thoughts on it would be that, I think it would be a great deal, because one drawback that I hear from people moving to Maumell, like if they say, oh, Wallace, you live in Maumell, how do you deal with the traffic? Well, I get up either really early or really late in terms of my shift, but, you know, if we have that, that, I guess that, that barrier that's broken now of the third entryway, then I believe that's going to increase the, excuse, for the lack of a better term, the explosiveness of Maumell, you know, in terms of expansion. So, yes, sir, that's kinda how I, my thoughts on it, rather.
Thank you very much, sir, appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilmember Mosley.
Are there any questions for Mr. Montgomery? Councilmember Timmons?
Mr. Montgomery, thank you for applying.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
In your request for the council position, you stated that you would be the best with the position because you are conservatively progressive.
Yes, ma'am.
Explain.
So, what I mean is, what I mean is this, like I did a lot of research, and I saw that Maumell doesn't really need help with expansion, but oftentimes, what I perceive is the expansion kinda happens from the ages of the 45 and up, you know, with the center, center on the lake, and that's a gorgeous facility, and it really benefits the people. But for the category of the ages of like the 25 to 35, that's kind of, I'm not gonna say there's nothing for them, but just to be able to partner, you know what I mean, with the, the beautiful ideas of what's already present, that's what I mean by conservatively progressive. Not too many changes, just one slight change to kind of partner with what's already going on.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Timmons. Yes, ma'am. Yes, sir.
Are there any other questions for Mr. Montgomery? If not, thank you very much. Do you have a final statement you'd like to make, or?
Yes, sir. Really, what I would like to say is thank you for your time. I know we all come from different backgrounds, we all have different, different, different accounts there, but time is the same for everyone, 24 hours. So, thank you to Mr. Mayor, to the city attorney, Madam City Clerk, and to the councilmembers. Thank you for this opportunity, and thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Mr. Montgomery, and you can remain in the room now.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Next candidate is, is Mr. Rick Anderson, but.
I'm gonna recuse myself.
You're gonna recuse yourself, okay. Councilmember Mosley?
I would like to go ahead and ask my questions.
Uh, okay.
My questions would have been to, Councilmember Anderson was one that did not submit any type of a resume as far as work experience, education, and that sort of thing, and I would have liked to have asked, you know, specifically what his education background is. If I, if I remember correctly, he has a high school education, I don't remember what else he has. I know he has been employed with the state, I would like to hear some elaboration on that, and perhaps how all those experiences in education have, have molded his interests. I would have liked to have asked him the conflicts of interest he might have, and any specific, particular city issue that's on his mind. Again, I'm very, very disappointed that he's refused to compete with the other applicants. That's all I've got, thanks.
Okay. Thank you, Councilmember Mosley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, like I stated before, I'm recusing myself from any discussion in this matter. Thank you for that.
Okay, there are the questions by city councilmembers? Okay, if not, we'll hear from our next applicant, which is Mr. Chad Gardner. Gardner. Good evening, Mr. Gardner. If you would, state your name and address for the record, please.
Absolutely, Chad Gardner, 147 Scenic Valley Loop, Maumell.
Thank you very much. The councilmembers have a copy of your resume in their packet, but if you want to just tell them a little bit about yourself?
Sure.
In your own words?
I know you've got my, my, I guess my professional resume, but just a little bit about my background. I grew up in Arkansas, Glenwood, Arkansas, just to the southwest of Hot Springs, and after graduating from there in 95, went to Harding University and Searcy, where I received my Bachelor's of Business Administration. Then went into the corporate world with Altell Communications before Verizon gobbled them up, and decided that I wanted to go out on my own into the insurance business, which is where I started in 2002, and then joined an agency and then purchased that agency in 2008. So, I've been in the insurance business now for 16 years, is what I've, I've been doing. So, that's, it's been a good career, that's where I plan to stay for a while. My business is based here in central Arkansas, I've got other agents that work with me in my business. And a little bit about me personally, my wife is a psychologist and has now left her psychology job to come join me in my personal business to help our insurance business grow. So, we've got three little kids, I've got two in kindergarten at Maumell Charter, and one in pre-K at Childcare Network. So, that's a little bit about me. We moved here in 2013 into Maumell Valley Estates, and we plan on being here for a lot longer. My wife says that she is not packing up and moving again, so. Maumell, for better or for worse, has stuck with me and my, my family of five for a period of time. So, with that, I guess I will let you all ask me whatever questions you might have.
Councilmember Saunders?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for applying, Mr. Gardner. I'm asking four questions of everyone that comes to the podium, every candidate that comes to the podium, and my goal is to, for me to feel more comfortable that you really know what city council is about and what, okay?
Sure, sure.
Enough said. Number one, approximately how many council meetings did you attend in the last two years where you did not attend for a specific reason?
Multi-part answer, if you don't mind.
No.
I have attended, this is my second council meeting in person. My wife previously worked odd hours at the hospital where she was employed, and so with her working 60-plus hours a week, I did not know if she was going to be here in the evenings. I'm a bit of a political junkie, I must confess, and I watch most of the, the council meetings online. So, to say that I've only been to two council meetings, I have watched the vast majority for multiple years, for better or for worse. So, was that, did I answer that? Was that what you had asked?
Well, and then the second part of that, that you did not attend for a specific issue.
I have attended planning committee meetings for specific issues, but I have not attended a council meeting for any specific issue.
I didn't think I'd seen you.
Other than just curiosity, yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, number two, what are the purposes of city council?
Well, as a, as a councilmember, you're elected to serve your ward, you know, first and foremost, and to, and to represent what the, the interests are of that specific ward, but I think it goes beyond that, where there's a table full of eight people here, two from each ward, and I think you all have to work together to be able to solve the city's problems and tend to the business matters. So, so what is the purpose of the council? I mean, we are, I think you have been elected or appointed in this case to serve in that role, and I think your first obligation is to the citizens of your ward, then secondly, to the citizens of Maumell overall. So, if that, if you have other specifics you want me to address, I'd be happy to.
No, that's fine, I'm just interested in your answer.
Okay.
Number three, on what basis will you make decisions on voting issues? On what basis?
I think first and foremost, it would, it would depend on the issue, but I would go back to what is in the best interest of, first, the ward, secondly, the, the future of Maumell. I think you have to look at this city as a whole and what is best for the overall city. You know, Ward Two may have different interests than Ward One, with growth and new subdivisions and things like that, but I think you have to weigh those two and, and look at what's in the best interest of, of the city of Maumell. So, that's where I would base my, my, my decisions. I also have personal beliefs that I believe in, and if I felt something was not in what I felt was the right way of doing things, I would, you know, not be for that, but I think you have to have a core, know where you stand on matters. But beyond that, I would make decisions based on what I think is best for the citizens of Ward Two and for Maumell.
Okay, very good. And my last question, what meetings, other than city council meetings, do you anticipate attending during a typical year?
Planning committee is one that I have attended for, for personal reasons, to know what was going on in, in areas close to my subdivision. Of course, you've also got the budget each year, and I would expect that. Any traffic committee issues that might pop up, that's that as well. So, I understand that there's a whole host of committees that are, you know, you all have to attend, and that's part of the job, that's part of the service.
Okay, very good. Thank you again, Mr. Gardner.
Sure, thank you.
Councilmember Holt?
Good evening, Mr. Montgomery. I got your advanced resume earlier, and I appreciated that, so I've had a chance. Did I say Gardner? No. I apologize. I'm humb- I was well aware of your name, I'm sorry, got too, too much too fast. I, I've read your resume, and I was very impressed indeed, and I appreciated it. This is one question that actually is not part of the five questions I'm supposed to ask. Did you play football, basketball, or was there a, you have a sort of towering height that's?
I played football in high school, but basketball, I was one of the tallest, but that involves a lot of running, up and down a court, and that was, that was not in my best interest.
It wasn't your thing.
That was not my thing. But thank you.
I'd ask. I have the five questions, and they're all the same for everybody. Making attendance at a city council is a priority. Are you, are there other commitments that you may have that would prevent you from meeting, coming to the meetings?
I do not have any other, and that's one of the reasons that I'm here tonight, is that previously, when I had considered running in the election for Ward Two, with my spouse's job and my family, that wasn't something that I could commit to, since she may have to, to be working on, on Monday evenings. But Monday evenings, all throughout the week, that's what my job is. I go to, that's, I'm, I'm in sales, that's what my job is, to attend anything that I need to, so that wouldn't be an issue.
Right. You seem like a salesman. History of having?
I'm gonna take that as a compliment. Thank you.
It is. Do you have a history of having been active in, as a community volunteer or an active community, or active community issues?
Yes, throughout school, you know, in my, in my life since then, I have been involved. One of the things that I do now, and my, one of my neighbors, Mr. Mazzoni, who you'll hear from next, is also involved in the POA for our neighborhood. And so that's one of the things where I felt it was important to get involved, to help shape our property owners' association, because we're brand new. We were just formed last year. And so Mr. Mazzoni and myself helped to craft the bylaws for that and get it formed and off the ground and running. So being involved in the community is something that I've always tried to do. You know, I want to make where I am a better place to live, so.
Gives you a large view, doesn't it? The handbook for municipal officials allow for certain conditions in relationship that does not cause a conflict of interest. Are you aware of any personal relationship, whether it be as an, with an organization of special interest groups, that may cause you to recuse yourself when voting on issues for the city?
Mr. Holt, my, being in business in central Arkansas, I do have clients all across central Arkansas. I work primarily with businesses on their benefit plans. So if a matter of one of my clients were to come before the council, that might be a position where I have to recuse myself. Now, that said, I do not have any business clients inside the city of Maumell. I have several just across the border on the boulevard in North Little Rock. But being in the business that I am, I do sell insurance to individuals as well, and so if one of those individuals ever came before the council with an issue that I had to vote on, I may have to recuse myself. But, you know, I'll add, since I have watched most of these council meetings, I can't think of an instance where I would have ever had to recuse myself.
Okay, I appreciate it. We're always looked at over our shoulder that, for people that want to know what we're doing. There are times when, when voting, that you may need to stand alone on an issue and perhaps find yourself standing alone in your opinion. Are you willing to speak out in support of your position in behalf of your constituents in your ward and the city at large, even though others may not like what you have to say?
That's part of leadership, yeah. We're, you know, part of that is doing what you feel is right, and if there is something where you do have to stand alone on your principles that you have, I think that's important to do, and I wouldn't have any problem with that.
Okay, I appreciate that. Are you willing to speak out at the council meetings and not remain silent? Do you think it's important to share your discussion, share discussions with your opinion to make it heard?
Absolutely. Now, I'm a very vocal person. I think the best things happen when everyone talks and communicates together on city matters, and so absolutely, I'll be, I'll be a very vocal person.
Very good, sir. But that, your answers have been excellent, and I appreciate your time, and thanks for applying.
Thank you, Mr.-
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Holt. Councilmember Mosley?
Yes, sir. Thank you for applying.
Thank you.
Appreciate it very much. I have three questions or areas of subjects I've been asking everybody about. First one, just education and work experience. Some of the folks that applied tonight did not list any of that sort of thing, and so I was trying to find out more. Just have a couple of minor questions for you, because I think you were pretty clear here. Sounds like you went to Harding University, majored in, had a Bachelor's degree in Business Administration with perhaps, they've changed how they do things since when I was in college, so everybody's got some kind of a little thing, entrepreneurial or professional sales, and I assume that's just especially that-
It is, professional sales is a, it's kind of an offshoot of marketing. So I have, I took a lot of marketing classes as well as sales classes, and sales was a lot of psychology classes. Maybe that's why I married a psychologist.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
All right. But your degree was from the School of Business, then?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. Let's see, as far as, oh, and you own your own health and life insurance agency, and that, I think you made that pretty clear.
Yes, sir.
You've been doing that for quite a while.
Sixteen, sixteen years?
Hard, complicated business, I'm sure. A lot of regulations.
Federal government keeps making changes, and we adapt and go on.
Yes, sir. Okay, I think Alderman Holt kind of covered, I usually ask about conflicts of interest, but, and I think I understood you to say you have no current or apparent conflicts of interest that might, that might be something that would affect your decisions.
Not that I'm aware of, no, sir.
Special interest groups or anything like that, so. Okay. Let's see, the last one, any particular city issue that's ongoing at this point that might be on your mind, you might want to just share your thoughts briefly on?
Well, the tax and revenue issue is a nice topic that's timely right now. You know, in regards to that, you know, I've followed the city council meetings for a number of years, you know, followed the budgeting process and, you know, looked at the revenues that come in, and the way I see Maumell currently is, we are, we're a great bedroom community that I chose five years ago to move my family to, for a reason. And it's pretty apparent that we need to grow our revenue base as a city. And so I think that's the most pressing issue for the city in the next five years, I mean, five-plus years. And so that's one of the reasons I wanted to apply for this position, was to be able to help shape Maumell for the future, since I plan on being here for a while. So I'm not sure if, I may have not answered your question completely, but I, you know, as far as issues, I think if the tax issue does not pass in the coming weeks, then the council and the city will have some important decisions to make about how we continue to grow, how, if we have to go it on our own, how do we do it? So I think that's gonna be, there's gonna be a lot of discussions around that over the coming years.
No, thank you. I was just interested in your thoughts. Thank you very much, sir. That's all I've got.
Okay. Are there any other questions for Mr. Gardner? Okay, is there a final statement you'd like to make, Mr. Gardner?
I would just say that thank y'all for the opportunity. I've enjoyed visiting with you all about this, and the reason I'm here now is because this was a good time for my family personally, and I just, I wanted to be able to serve. And so this is something I'd intended on doing down the road anyway, and after Mr. Kelly retired, here I am, so thank you all.
Thank you very much. You can remain in the room. Good evening, Mr. Mazzoni.
Good evening.
Just state your name and address for the record, please.
Sure, it's Randall Mazzoni, live in 158 Maumell Valley Estates there.
Okay, the, we've got a copy of your resume in the packet, and if you would, if in your own words, if you'll just tell the council a little bit about yourself.
Okay.
And, I mean, they've got it, so you don't have to go into a lot of detail, but whatever you would like to share with them.
Okay. Born and raised in New Jersey, went to the Air Force Academy and graduated in 1990, it's a long time ago. Wanted to be a pilot, flew C-130s for, phew, many years, many years. So I started out in maintenance, actually, because it was after the Gulf War, and it was a cutback, so I did that on C-5s and then came back into C-130s to fly and did that since 1994. Started at Pope, went up to Alaska, two assignments here at Little Rock and a staff tour out at Tampa. Worked with the Special Operations Command for the Central Division. I started really my resume once I hit on my assignment here, the first one, as the Operation Sports Squadron, and that's where I really started getting more of the project management, the analysis side. I was in charge of running the, really all the analysis and planning of the annual flying training for all the, all the PFD, all the student flows. So anytime there was a change, they wanted to add more training, they, we'd lost a plane for maintenance long-term, or as to going up to another, to give to another facility that might need it more, we had to figure out what the impact was and how to get back on track. So especially the worst was when we lost about half of our planes for wing cracks. I got to do the analysis on that. That was when I first really jumped into analysis, and that went up to the Secretary of the Air Force on the acquisition side, it really put an impetus on our program. After that, went to this Tampa Special Operations Command and spent a lot of time deployed in Baghdad, working with the SOF. We were the command liaison for Central Command that deployed part and dealt with all the logistics, the infrastructure, planning out the long-term basing after, after the surge was gonna be over. From there, came back to here, and I ended up being the Director of Operations for the 62nd Air Lift Squadron, which is the, which at the time was the, was the largest C-130. It was the legacy of the old 1962 models, and we, we read the bulk of the training. So I was the, so the Director of Operations ran that for, I was been there about a year and a half before I decided it was time to retire. Once, once my oldest son used to refer to work as daddy's house, we figured it was time to hang up. Retired, started working in the simulator, where now, instead of doing all the background stuff, now we're just teaching the new generation how to fly the C-130 in the simulator. So I started that in 2011. Once we decided to stay here permanently, we were living in Sherwood, and we looked around, and this seemed a place to go, so we moved down here, and we've been here ever since. And after putting a whole bunch of solar panels up, we're not going anywhere, so we're, we gotta, we gotta let them pay for themselves, so we're stuck here for a while.
All right. We, some of the councilmembers have some questions for you.
Yes, sir.
All right. Councilmember Saunders?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Mazzoni, thank you for your service, and thanks for applying for this position. I, I like to, in these situations, I like to feel comfortable that a candidate is familiar with what city council is about and what we do. So I have four questions, and they're, they're pretty well focused on that. I'm asking the same questions of everybody that goes to that podium, every candidate. So, number one, approximately how many council meetings did you attend in the last two years where you did not attend for a specific issue?
That would be, last two years would just be one, would be one. I've been here two total, but I've been here since, like I said, 2012. So down low a lot, we work nights, but I've only been here two total, once in the last.
Okay, good. Number two, what are the purposes of city council?
Purpose of city council is probably for the overall welfare and well-being of all this, all the citizens. Biggest thing is making the budgets, developing the ordinances, and seeing that the ordinances are carried out. Probably the largest, providing for the fire police department, setting up, setting up those, and that's about all I have.
Okay, good. Okay, number three, on what basis will you make your decisions on voting issues?
I'm more of a fact, math-based person. I will say, basically, I'm looking at the general facts. One thing I've learned through, through many years, especially in different positions, that the final, the final answer that you think is not always the one going in, you have to wait and get all the facts. Learned early on, if you, if you trust your gut too much, it will get you in trouble. So I will sit back, get all the facts, and then go with where the facts take me.
Okay, thank you. Okay, and my final question, what meetings, other than city council meetings, do you anticipate attending during a typical year?
A lot of things, the budget. That's probably where the area we're most in, and also some of the special projects, but long-term budgeting and developing of that, I think that's probably the most critical we have for the, for the future of Maumell, and that's where I really want to put, put my energy to.
Okay, okay, thank you again. That's all I had.
Thank you, Councilmember Saunders. Councilmember Holt?
Good evening, sir. Thank you for your application and coming before the council. These questions, the first time you've heard them, but everybody else heard them four times, so they're getting tired of hearing me ask their questions. And anyway, will you make attendance at a council meeting a priority? Are there other commitments that you may have to cause you to miss meetings?
No, definitely make it a priority. It's easy to, the days they are are pretty, pretty clear. The only, the only limitation would be work, we work the simulator 24/7, but it's easy once you put in your, your request, these don't pop up right away if you put in your request a few weeks out. It's easy to schedule by, it just sometimes will cost some Saturdays.
Good. Do you have a history of having been active in community volunteer work or active in community issues?
Only until recently. That's one of the bad things about being military, when you're, when you're going from assignment to assignment and being deployed so much, you really don't get a chance to be involved in the, the community. So it hasn't been until, until recently, once retired, and the only real, real community involvement, I try and get involved, is what my, my children are interested in. So they do, they do swimming, so we're, we volunteer for about every, every meet they have down there. Got certified as a judge to work other, other matches that they're at. Cub Scouts, worked a lot of that. We just did the Pinewood Derby this weekend, so I sat around, took up and set up, took down, as well as Sunday school teacher up at the, at the Mac of the Heart of Mary Church. That's about the, that's about the sum total of my community involvement.
You don't get bored, that's for sure.
They keep me busy.
The handbook for municipal officials allow for certain conditions in relationships that does not cause a conflict of interest. Are you aware of any personal relationship, whether it be with an organization of special interest group, that may cause you to be, to risk, recuse yourself when voting on issues for the city?
No, no, I really have no ties in special interest groups here. Work is at Jacksonville away, so I really don't have any vested interest other than, other than my home here in Maumell.
There are times when voting that you may need to take a stand on an issue, perhaps, and perhaps find yourself standing alone in your opinion. Are you willing to speak out in support of your position in behalf of the constituents in your ward and the city at large, even though others may not like what you have to say?
Yes, yes, and I've learned a lot running, running the operations of a squadron, you have to be that guy a lot to make the, to make the call. The worst was probably when we were, this was probably around 2010, when we had really bad weather, we were about two weeks behind the timeline, and if you don't get caught up before the next realm of students come through, you, you just get further and further behind. So my guys retired, and we were flying about every other Saturday to catch up, and they needed a break and went to the OG, and we talked back about whether we could take a few weeks off, weekends off. And basically, I had to, had to barter the Saturday before Easter, because that was the last one, but I knew the guys would make it one time, because we talked, we did our planning, so we stood fast and we made it, so.
You had to tell them what they had to do.
Oh, you, well, yeah, I had to do that a lot.
Are you willing to speak out at council meetings and not remain silent? Do you think it is important to share in the discussions and make your opinion known?
Yeah, my wife will tell you self-expression is usually not one of my problems. So I can normally talk when, when I have, have an opinion, however, like I said, it is fact-based, so I have an opinion one time, and I have been convinced otherwise, so I will speak it, and as long as, as long as everything makes sense, that's what I'm, that's what I'm looking for the most.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate your answers, and I appreciate you applying for the position. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Holt. Councilmember Mosley?
Yes, sir. I, I've just been asking, or I have subject area, three subject areas I've been asking questions on, and so the first one is, there were some candidates that didn't submit much information or any information at all about education and work experience, and I certainly don't have that problem with you. Told us a lot about what you do and, and your background, and given us a lot of insights on your thoughts about your numbers, math guy, budgeting's interesting, you, that sort of thing, and so I'm glad to hear that. And education, you graduated from the Air Force Academy there in Colorado Springs.
Yes, sir.
And it looks like you went on to get some additional education, Master of Arts. You have a master's degree in computer resources and information management.
Yeah, that's a, that's a fancy title. Computers were an infancy there. It was more, it was more system analysis, how to put everything together, how, how complex system runs, and I think computers were the big thing at the time, so we, we had some delves into that, but.
The name of the degree, you didn't mention.
That's all.
All right. And I think Alderman, or Councilmember Holt covered conflicts of interest. I don't have any further questions about that. Any, and my last thing is, I've got a question. Is there any particular city issue that's, that's on your mind now that you might want to share your, your thoughts on?
There's always, probably the big thing coming up is the, the offer of the room is the, is the interchange, and coming up on there, and that's what, really, looking at that is what got me interested in coming here today and, and working the long terms on that. That's a very complicated issue, and I'm not sure it's really gotten out there to get the information that everyone needs. There's a lot of the big pie in the sky, but nothing really the details on. I mean, we are gonna be, if this passes, we're gonna, we're gonna have an annual interest to pay the, the debt service of $4.4 million. Now, that includes- Now, that includes the 2012 bonds, that includes the 2015 bonds, and though not part of here, we're also paying about $1.2 million a year to service the bonds from Cal. That's not here, but that still, overall, comes from the taxpayers. So, we're definitely feeling a pinch, but I don't think anyone's really talked about, well, you have, yeah, we're going to have some potential shops built, but can we pay this off? Because this is a large burden that the taxpayers are going to do. So, being a numbers guy, I ran some numbers, because as, is Eric still here? Yeah, as he'll attest, we've had many, many conversations back and forth on this. And using just our averages star growth in our sales tax, that's, I didn't talk anything about the county, just the sales tax. We averaged since 2012 to now about 3.3% to 3.5%, depending on how you want to lay that line out, without any other input or growth, assuming 3% on the bonds, which is, as of, I haven't seen this week, but last week's, that was the 20-year bond rate for an AA. We could have those bonds paid off if we commit to paying them, I mean, we'll have to for all that, in 15 years, that's with the 3.3. If we do get just a single, a single large store there, and I used their numbers of, I think I saw one about 600 grand that we'd put in as a one-time business. I started that around 2022, we could pay this off by 2030. And the other advantage of that is that's when the bonds, the 2015 bonds, are going to expire. So, if we plan this right, the bill for this will be due, the bill from the 2015 bonds will be good, so that will give us, instead of more taxes that we need, that would be an average gain of about $2.7 million that the people would be able to pay into our economy here and grow it even more. That's where we need to work on, is paying off the debt, the long term, and concentrating on, because once those debts are paid off, and we start paying and buying stuff more locally, because there's more money, that will increase everyone coming in. And also, if you look at the surrounding communities, more and more, they're financing everything through debt. And once you get more debt, what do you have to do? Raise taxes. So, the same timeframe is probably when our surrounding communities are going to have to raise their taxes again, and we will be able to knock off that half percent, and now we'll be looking at the big business and say, hey, you can go to these communities, which is about, it would probably be about 10%, 10 and a half percent, or we will have at least a percentage back on them, and we won't have an AMP tax, which is something else. I think we need to actually advertise more. When I lived in Dover, they changed the, they took the state motto off of all the signs to replace it with "Home of Tax-Free Shopping." And the four years I was there, the community went from really just a bedroom community to, we almost, I mean, at least for me, it seemed we doubled in size, but the amount of businesses we brought in, large corporations, was pretty significant. And that's where I think we need to concentrate our efforts and get that word to the people that, hey, this will help, but you trust us with your taxes, we will turn around, and we will pay off this debt, not throw more projects onto it, but use the money saved to increase our standard of living. That's the vision I have of Maumell, and that's the vision I want to see, and I want to be on that team.
Thank you very much.
Sorry, I said that. Sorry.
That was quite good. Thank you very much. I appreciate you applying for the position very much, and that's all the questions I have. Thank you, sir.
I'm sure I'll get in trouble at home now.
There any other questions for Mr. Mazzoni?
Does he have any final comment?
Well, yeah, I'll see if there's any questions first, then. If there's not any other questions, you're welcome to make a final statement or comment or...
No, sir, I think I said it off.
Well, thank you very much. You can stay in the room, too.
Can we get some coffee?
Black, please.
Yes.
Just stretching. I'm having a nice, relaxing seat like you guys.
Can we get one more?
Hey, how you doing?
Good. Just state your name and address for the record, please.
Cambie Wall, live at Fivebrook Place.
Okay, and you've given the council a resume here, but in your own words, do you want to just tell them a little bit about yourself? And then, they've got some questions they're going to ask you when you do that, so...
Sure. I moved, I was born in Iowa, my family and I moved to Maumell in 1984, so I've been here quite a long time. I currently work at Petco. I'm involved in, growing up, I was always involved in sports for the city, played football, played baseball, went to Old Grove, so I've been around this area, and I've watched this, I've watched this city grow from very small. I was telling them in the boardroom, I remember when the Boulevard was two lanes, and now we're working on a third exit. Now, I have a wife, two kids. I'm on the Maumell Soccer Board. I also coach youth basketball with my daughters. I truly love this town, it's a wonderful town to be in, couldn't think of a better town, all the stuff to do. It's a great community. It's just a town I really enjoy.
All right. This time, the council members have a couple of questions for you. Councilmember Saunders?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for applying, Mr. Wall. I'm asking the same questions of everybody, every candidate that comes to the podium, and I have four questions, and basically, what I'm trying to do is feel comfortable that you know what you're getting into, you know something about this, okay? Number one, approximately how many council meetings did you attend in the last two years where you did not attend for a specific issue?
None.
Okay.
Zero.
That's an honest answer, it's okay. Number two, what are the purposes of city council?
I believe the city council's here to help the citizens. Obviously, you're broken up into certain areas, it'd be tough to control the whole city, but you're here to address concerns and protect the rights of the citizens of Maumell.
Okay. Okay, number three, on what basis will you make your decisions on voting issues?
Basically, when the issue comes up, I'll do all the research I can to make sure I'm making the right decision, not only for my ward, but for myself. So, I'll form my own opinion based off the research. I work at a retail store, so my job is to get the best information for the customer, so I don't want to tell them something that's incorrect. I want to make sure I have all the right information, that way I can give them the best answer or the best recommendation for their needs, not only for them, but so I feel comfortable as well.
Okay. Okay, and my last question is, what meetings, other than city council meetings, do you anticipate attending during a typical year?
Well, like I said, I'm on the soccer board, so we have meetings once a month. I've been recommended to be on the basketball board. I do meetings for my company, and that's basically just the meetings. Like I said, I work a 60, 70-hour week, and then I coach two soccer teams and a basketball team, so I stay pretty busy.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Holt?
Good evening, Mr. Wall. Thank you so much for applying. It's always nervous, standing up here in front of people and trying to, you know, get your point across. I do have five questions. It's the fifth time that I would have read this, and so I'm getting pretty good at it by now. Will you make attendance at city councils a priority? Are there other commitments that you may have that would cause you to miss meetings?
The only priority that would cause me to miss is being ill, and then I couldn't walk or anything like that. I've worked, been working since I was 18. Last 25 years, I've only called in sick to work one time, so I'm passionate in everything I do, so if I'm on the board, city council, I'll be passionate. This be every meeting that I can be here, I will be here.
I appreciate that. Thank you, sir. Do you have a history of having been active in community volunteer work or active in community issues?
I do community volunteer work, the retail, I work at Petco, so I've actually worked with the Maumell Friends and the Animals numbers of times, and I work with, I work in Conway now, so I work with the Conway people, volunteer, help them out, and that's a lot of, and like I said, I volunteer my time with the youth programs like soccer, basketball, I've done baseball. So, yes, I do volunteer my time in those activities.
Awesome, and you still work 60, 70 hours a week?
Yeah.
Bless your heart. All right. The handbook for our municipal officials allow for certain conditions in relationship that does not cause a conflict of interest. Are you aware of any personal relationship, whether it be with an organization of special interest groups, that may cause you to recuse yourself when voting for the city, on city issues for the city of Maumell?
No, not at this time. Like I said, I stay pretty busy, so I really don't get into any of that.
Okay, good, well, at least you're clean there. There are times when voting, you may need to take a stand on an issue and perhaps find yourself standing alone in your opinion. Are you willing to speak out in support of your position in behalf of the constituents in your ward and at the city at large, even though others may not like what you have to say?
Yeah, once I've made the decision through all my research and went down, I'm there, I'm done. You know, they can, I will listen, but once I've made the decision, unless there's factual evidence that can change my decision, my decision is final. Like I said, if they come at me, like I said, I should have all my research so I can explain why I'm doing this. And unfortunately, you're not going to please everybody as much as you want to, it just doesn't happen.
Right, well, that's all we can ask. Are you willing to speak out at council meetings and not remain silent? Do you think it is important to share in the discussions and make your opinion heard?
Oh, absolutely. The more people have opinions, it just helps you get all the information that you need, facts, and even just opinions, that way you can have a good discussion. A good discussion will help you resolve any issues, and whether you're right or wrong, or you're liked or hated, it's still a good discussion, and everybody gets all the information that they need.
Great, thank you, Mr. Wall. It was a pleasure to meet you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Holt. Councilmember Mosley?
Yes, sir. Yeah, I have three subject areas I've been asking people about, and I appreciate it. The first one was, I was, in a lot of cases, trying to draw out more information on education and work experience. Some people did not submit much of anything or nothing. You've been pretty good about what you've put on your resume here. It looks like you majored in communication at the University of Iowa.
Yes, sir.
Did you actually go up there and go to school there?
I did, learned a lot of good and bad lessons there, but I did go there.
Okay, well, great. And actually graduated with a four-year bachelor's degree?
No, I only went two years, and then I moved back home.
Okay.
So, I majored in communication, I just didn't finish.
Okay, that was your major, but you did not quite finish, okay. All right, and let's see, a store manager at Petco, and you've had some very, very tough retail experience, it looks like.
Absolutely.
I've known people that have done that, and that is a tough career and very well-respected, probably not appreciated enough by the companies people work for, but anyway, thank you for applying. The other thing, other subject area was conflicts of interest, and I think Alderman Holt kind of touched on that. I did notice that you're involved in the Maumell Soccer Board.
Yes, sir.
And that, from time to time, may, there may be some issue that the soccer board may want to advocate for something with the city and that sort of thing. If you were on the city council, how would you handle that?
Again, it's just getting all the information. Like I said, I don't look at it, when I'm on the soccer board, I'm here to help the soccer kids and the parents. I want to make the program better than it is, than before I started the board, so same thing. So, I don't look at the issue like, oh, I'm on the soccer board, let's do it. If it's not feasible, or if it's not right, then it's something that I don't, I feel comfortable I can say no to.
So, you might, what I think I'm hearing you say is that you might recuse if there's some issue that might provide an appearance that you're advocating for the soccer board as opposed to being more objective?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, that's all I was asking. There are a lot of issues going on here in Maumell, and I just wanted to ask you kind of an open question. Is there any particular city issue or anything that's going on here currently that you might want to share your opinion on or discuss?
I don't, I mean, I have a lot of opinions, I guess. The only big issue coming up right now is the special election for the, obviously, the third exit. My opinion is, I don't know if we really need a special election for it. I think we could have voted it during the initial election, and it's something I'm not necessarily for, I guess. I've driven both ways, so, I mean, I see it's fix the traffic. I don't know if it'll necessarily fix the traffic with all the actual residential that were built there, but that's the only issue currently. Like I said, everything else seems to me pretty good on the up and up. I would like to see a little bit more commercial come to Maumell. I'm sure everybody else would as well, and that's the big thing for me, is building commercial, and then, like I said, the third exit away is the only other issue coming up.
Okay, great, great answers. Thank you very much for your time. Thank you very much for applying.
Oh, no problem.
There any other questions for Mr. Wall? Okay, if not, Mr. Wall, you're welcome to make a closing statement or anything you wish to add that you haven't already.
I just want to thank you guys for the work that you guys do. I appreciate everything. It's an honor and a privilege to be up here with you. Like I said, this is my first board meeting, or city council meeting, kind of nervous and excited all at the same time. Like I said, if you picked me, just know I give everything, I put as much passion as this as I do everything in my life, so if I was to do this, I would be a proud member, and I'd put as much effort into this as I do everything, my wife, kids, my family, my friends, my work, so I appreciate you guys giving me the time to interview, and thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Wall.
Thank you, Mr. Wall.
At this time, I want to thank all the applicants that submitted for this, I don't, I can't, I don't remember exactly the last time, but I don't know if we had six or not, but this seems to be one of the largest groups we've had, and well-qualified, too, is what I saw. At this time, the council has the hard decision of voting, and so there's a ballot for every council member that is voting, and you need to check the person that you think would fill this position best, and then you need to sign it legibly, please.
I know.
And while the council is voting, most of y'all will not get the position, obviously. I'd strongly encourage y'all to continue to be involved. I know there's at least one council member up here who once went out to get appointed and didn't get appointed, and so I'd encourage you to either run for positions or apply to be on various boards and commissions. We're always looking for folks that are wanting to get involved, and I guarantee you, if someone wants to get involved, we can find a way to get y'all involved. So, thank you for applying, and don't become strangers if you don't get it.
Okay, and it's going to require four votes for the person who gets it, so what we may have to do, and I haven't, I don't even know what the results are right now, but if it, we may have to go to, like, to take the top two and do another vote, it's what we've done in the past in order to get four votes. You can only vote one time.
Mr. Mayor, while we're doing that, I just want to say for myself that I personally want to thank each of the candidates that came. I'm impressed with your resumes and your backgrounds, and it was a genuine honor and pleasure to get to have an exchange with each of you. Thank you again.
Okay, um, okay. Councilmember Holt, I need you to vote for just one person.
What did she say about the octogenarian or whatever?
Okay, we do have one person that got four votes, and that is Ms. Marion Scott. So at this time, Ms. Scott, you need to come up and take the oath of office, and it's going to be administered by our city clerk, Ms. Tina Timmons, so. And then she gets to take her seat immediately, so we're putting her to work tonight, so.
Thank you. Hi.
Marion Scott.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Arkansas.
And the Constitution of the State of Arkansas.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties
of the office of council member
Of the office of council member.
And the city of Mammell, upon which I am about to enter.
And the city of Mammell, upon which I am about to enter.
We're going to make him change his name to Conny Scott. Welcome aboard, Councilmember Scott, and I do, like I said, please, it's like the city attorney said, please be ready to, we've got openings for planning commissions, civil service commission at various times throughout the year, so everybody seemed well-qualified that we had tonight, so be sure and say involved in your community. We appreciate everybody that submitted their name. Sounds like we need someone to hold a bunch of umbrellas outside, but, that's rain, yes. So if, moving on to the next item of business, we have resolution number 2018-05 regarding surplus property. Madam City Clerk, if you read that by title only?
A resolution of the city council of the city of Mammell, Plaski County, Arkansas, resolution number 2018-05, a resolution to approve the disposal of city surplus property.
The public works department has a list of property that's included, or it's every, a lot of items of property, which is two New Holland tractors and a Kubota front motor, and the total value of that equipment is fourteen thousand five hundred dollars. Councilmember Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to make a motion that we accept resolution 2018-105.
We have a motion and a second to approve resolution 2018-05 regarding surplus property. Is there a discussion on that motion? Councilmember Mosley?
I just, could you give us a quick summary of, is it fourteen thousand, is fourteen thousand five hundred of property that's going to be disposed? It's basically going to be traded in, is that correct?
Oh.
On new equipment?
I'll let Madam City Clerk answer that question. She's been involved in it more than I have.
Yes, the equipment we currently have is going to get, for the example, the two New Holland tractors, we're going to get a trade-in value of six thousand dollars. And they're supporting documentation detailing this, and then the remaining amount is for the Kubota, for front mower. So it is a trade-in value, yes.
How many tractors are being traded in, or, and how many is being purchased?
There's two tractors being traded in, two tractors will be purchased. The equipment is going to be replaced, is essentially what's happening. So the two tractors are going to be replaced, and then a new front mower is going to be replaced.
All right, thank you.
There any other questions on resolution 2018-05? If not, all is in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no. Motion passes. Next item is resolution number 2018-06, setting the rental fees for the pavilion at Lake Willistee. Madam City Clerk, if you'd read that by title only?
A resolution of the city council of the city of Mammell, county of Plaski, state of Arkansas, a resolution to be entitled resolution number 2018-06, a resolution establishing the hourly and daily fee for the use of the recreational pavilion at Lake Willistee Park and for other purposes.
The twenty dollars per hour is very comparable to what the other cities or parks charge. Burns Park is a little different. They've got like a three-hour minimum or something like that, and it's sixty dollars. So if you break it down per hour, it is still twenty dollars per hour. And I don't guess Mr. Rayburn's not outside, is he?
Yes, he is.
Oh, he is? Okay. So if there's any questions regarding, he did the research, okay. I thought he was there earlier, and then he hit on me, but, okay, all right, okay. So he's here to, he's done the research on it, so if there's any questions, I defer to him. Councilmember Mosley?
Okay, yeah, I do have a couple of questions. Do we charge any rental income on, like, the use of the stage, or somebody wanted to use that, or that one bunker that's?
We do, we do the pavilion. We've had some weddings out there, and I believe it's twenty, twenty-five dollars, or maybe fifty dollars for the day for a wedding.
Typically, we don't rent the stage, but we have let groups utilize it for different events that's held at the park.
But it's not, it's not ever been rented on an hourly basis or a daily basis for, like, a private use.
Okay, you mentioned something about weddings and a pavilion?
Well, there's a, it's the gazebo, the memorial gazebo.
Yeah, okay.
We've had a few weddings there, small, of course.
But it does, you have kind of indicated, it looks like it's just kind of, our pavilion rental will be kind of in line with other cities.
Yes, we did, looked at North Rock, Sherwood, Burns Park pavilions, and due to size and some amenities, there was, it's kind of in between Sherwood and Burns Park, so we went middle of the road between the.
Okay, great. Nobody's using it, somebody can just set up and use it?
And we're going to post a sign out there when it's reserved, so people will know as soon as we have the reservations, we can put those up there. If not, we'll have the sign down, and people can walk up and use it if it's not reserved.
Thank you very much, and it's a pretty facility.
Thank you. It turned out real good. We're still making some improvements to it as far as we're adding the grill. Doesn't look like we'll be doing any concrete work this week, the rain we just got, but hopefully next week, we've got it formed up to where we'll have a little patio on the backside of the grill, and then we're doing some drainage off the pavilion, so we won't have any erosion control.
Thank you, sir.
Councilmember Saunders?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, we were out walking, and I noticed you're doing the drainage improvements. I did also notice, and I'm just curious, in a prior walking around the lake session, I noticed that you put the informational sign that we discussed last council meeting. You had that out there, but the last time we walked, I noticed that it's gone.
Yes, we've taken it down until we start, once we, we'll put it back up, once we know the fees, and then put some information out there. We've got that to where we can lock it on, and we tried to make it, it's got a big red header on it. So we didn't want to leave it out there all the time, but when we do have rentals, that's when we'll stick it out there. We'll stick it out there to begin with, just to get the word out, and then we'll only put it out probably the week of the rental, so people will know. I'm hoping that we'll have enough rentals to where to stay out there quite often, but if not, we'll just take it down.
Based on what you said, I assume that you're going, did I hear you say that you're going to put the actual prices, twenty dollars per hour, a hundred and fifty per day?
Yes, sir.
Okay, good. I think that's good. Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think this is very reasonable, and with that, I'd like to entertain a motion to adopt resolution 2018-06.
A motion and second to adopt resolution 2018-06. Is there a discussion on that motion? If not, all is in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no. Motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Rayburn.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item is mayor's comments. Just wanted to let everybody know that I included a bracket in the back of the packet there. The five A state basketball tournament will be at the Mammell High School February the 27th through March the 3rd. So we will have sixteen boys' teams and sixteen girls' teams that will be coming to Mammell for roughly a week. And some of those teams probably will be traveling for more than three hours away, so there's a good possibility that they will spend the night in Mammell at least one night. So as you get toward the end of the week, they'll probably have to stay, because the way it's scheduled at the start, they may not play, they may play on like Tuesday and not play again until Thursday, but as they get toward the end of the week, they'll have to play quicker, because there'll be less teams involved. And so some of them are local teams, some will be from the Little Rock area, so they might eat here. You know, we might get a little bit of food revenue from them. But then the ones that are traveling from far away, we should get food revenue and possibly hotel revenues. So just wanted y'all aware of it, the bracket's there, but I'd recommend anybody that has the opportunity to go out and catch some pretty good basketball at the Mammell High School. And our police department is working with the school to make sure that it's safe for all the visitors to the city, so. And then the only other thing I need to mention under mayor's comments, Councilmember Mosley had mentioned that he'd talked to the executive director of Metro Plan, Tab Townsley, and he'd be willing to come to a meeting. He will be at our next council meeting to speak on March the 5th, and so we'll have him at the start of the meeting. He was, he and I both were afraid that if we both spoke tonight, it'd be double-barrel mayors, and y'all wouldn't go for that. So, so he'll be at the next meeting, so.
So much mayor.
Yeah, you can only handle so much mayor, that's right. And that's it. Next item is planning commission report, and that will be done at the next, well, we don't have a planning commission meeting this month, so that won't be done for well over a month. Any council members' comments? Councilmember Mosley?
Just out of curiosity, I was wondering who else, and maybe the vote totals on the, on the open position, what they were. If the city clerk could share that?
There were four, I don't, I put them away, but there were four votes for Marion Scott. There was one vote for Councilmember Anderson, and then there was one vote for Mr. Gardner.
I actually voted for Mr. Mazan.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mazoni, that's the one. I was going to pull it out to check. And give me a moment, I can confirm all of that. That's correct. One vote for Councilmember Anderson, one for Mr. Mazoni, the rest for Councilmember Scott.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate it.
Okay, I will. Councilmember Timmons?
I just want to thank all the applicants. We had a really, really good poll from you guys, and I hope you guys will continue to participate in the city business. And I got all your numbers, so I'll be calling.
She will, she will.
Okay, if there's not any other council members' comments, Mr. City Attorney, oh, wait, all right. You're going to have to do quicker, you're going to lose your spot. Councilmember Saunders?
Thank you, Mayor. I also want to say essentially the same thing, but I'm going to base it on my experience. I was once in your position as a candidate, and it came down to a split vote, and Mayor didn't give it to me. So I decided I'd had enough of this, so the next election, I went out and got elected, okay? So don't give up the ship. You know, if you're sincere about one of these seats, go for it, okay? You want it bad enough, you'll get it, okay? But thanks for applying.
All right, any other council member comments? Last chance. All right, Mr. City Attorney?
Yes, sir. I just wanted to give a litigation update. The Wainwright case, which you all may recall, involved the individual who claimed he was injured in the back of the police vehicle during transportation that has been handled by the municipal vehicle program. They've decided, primarily because the officer no longer lives in state, that it'd be better to just settle the matter, so they're settling that. It won't cost us any money, because it's basically under the automobile case. The case of Mosley v. the city of Mammell has been submitted to the municipal league, to the municipal legal defense program, who will be representing the city in that case going forward. And that's all I had. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Madam City Clerk?
I just wanted to bring to everyone's attention the meetings that we have coming up next week, so you all are aware of it. There's some pretty important meetings taking place. The traffic committee meeting, the town hall meeting, and the all-inclusive playground meeting. And there's also a sign committee meeting. Councilmember Scott, if you can tell me again that date?
Thursday at four o'clock.
Thursday at four o'clock, and I'll send you guys a reminder before close of business tomorrow. That's all, Mayor.
Okay. Mr. City Attorney?
Yeah, I missed my last call too. I know we had some folks that applied for the position. I just wanted to let them know if they want to keep abreast of what's going on in the city. If you contact the city clerk treasurer, she'll probably, and ask, she'll probably put you on an email list, which is the same email list that the city council members are on, and so you'll get the dates and times of different meetings, if you're interested in that. I'd be willing to bet she'd accommodate your request.
Thank you, Attorney Norris. You are correct.
Thank you.
Okay, and Ms. Gillum mentioned that there's a lot of meetings here, but also one that's not on there that will occur before our next council meeting is the Mammell Expo is March the 1st. The expo is actually from 2:00 to 6:00, and it's Finding Treasures in Mammell, is that correct? Something like that?
It's pretty accurate, yes.
That's pretty close. All right, Finding Treasures in Mammell, or something similar to that. It's at the Jess Odom Community Center, but at noon that day, if you didn't get enough of the state of the city, you're welcome to come, listen to me, give the state of the city again on that day at a luncheon. And so the Mammell Chamber is handling both of those, so contact them if you would like tickets to the state of the city luncheon, or if you would like to, well, the booths may already be filled up. She's probably taking another booth, too. If you need a booth at the expo, I'm sure she'd sell you one of those, but then be sure and attend the expo on March the 1st. If there's no other business to come before the council, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no. Meeting is adjourned.